Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Malibu Planning Commission adjourned regular meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2019. Kathleen, could we get a roll call? Let's see who's here.
Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Uring.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Charles, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberally and justice for all.
Charles, thank you very, very much. Can we get an approval of the agenda, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with, as staff recommends, with item 3B1 continued to 10/21/19, item 4A to a date uncertain, item 4B to 10/21/19, item 4C to a date uncertain, item 4D to 10/21/19, item 4E to 10/21/19, item 5B to October, 10/21/19, and item 5E to 10/21/19.
Second.
Excuse me, Commissioner Mazza, 5E is to a date uncertain?
Oh, I'm sorry. Amended to a date uncertain?
No, 5E, E is an L.
I second. So 5D is not continued, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So 5D is going to be here tonight, 5E is going to a date, October 21st, I'm skipping that meeting, that doesn't sound.
It's my birthday, I'm looking to skip it, too.
Man, doesn't look good. Okay, Kathleen, can we get the posting?
We've got a vote on it.
I've got a second, I got, oh.
Oh, you've got a second?
Can we get a, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Kathleen, report on posting the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 26th, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on October 2nd, 2019.
Thank you very, very much. Ceremony presentation, staff update on the Woolsey Fire, if you could, Richard.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll give you a quick update on where we are with the rebuild process. To date, we've approved 55 applications that are like-for-like replacements of the structures. We've done 88 applications where it's like-for-like, plus they're doing some sort of increase within 10 percent. And 12 applications have been filed for projects where they are going beyond 10 percent or perhaps applying for a coastal development permit to do something drastically different. We've approved 155 single-family residences, these are homes that have made it through the planning process. So far, that consists of administrative plan reviews and planning verification applications. And we have 11 single-family homes under review right now. And those are, one is a coastal development permit, and the remainder are administrative plan reviews. So just once again, to show you how our numbers break down, it's 155 residences we've approved, 25 second units or accessory dwelling units have been approved, and then 80 accessory structures. And that 80 could be a garage, a barn, a fence, it doesn't necessarily have to be a home.
They're not necessarily all part of the 155, they're, they're.
In addition to. Yes, in addition to.
Okay, got it.
And we have been implementing the fee waiver program. To date, we've waived the total of $770,000-some thousand. Now, these are the fees that folks would pay for the planning review, review during building plan check, and all of the city specialist's fees. The Water District has a similar fee waiver program that is not administered through the city, that's administered through Water District 29. In the Building and Safety Department, they have 82 applications that they understand are being prepared for building plan check submittal. They have 46 applications that are currently under plan check, and to date, they have issued 25 building permits for single-family homes that are replacements to the fire. So there are, there have been other single-family home permits that have been issued, however, those are just business as usual, those would be for projects approved by this commission. But 25 are specific to homes that are being replaced as a result of the fire. I'm available for any questions, should you have any.
I have a question.
Questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hill, no.
Hi, Richard. We've seen some graphs at other times for other things on these kinds of numbers, and I think it would be really helpful to see some of these, rather than just the individual number, this is what we've done by now, actually see that plotted on a graph over time, so that we can either have a very edifying sense of how much progress we're making, or see if, in fact, we're not making very much progress and, you know, need to change something.
I understand, more of a time series.
Yeah.
John?
It's not too much trouble.
You seemed a little vague on people over 110 percent, is it right that if you're over 110 percent, you have to get a CDP?
Not in all cases. In some cases, if the property were to qualify for an exemption from a coastal development permit, that has taken place, because they're, they've put the house back and they're doing in addition to it. When someone goes over 10 percent, you know, 10 percent, and they're in the appeal jurisdiction, they have to get a coastal development permit, or if they have a deed restriction. And then also, when it results in the major reciting of the building pad. Some folks have opted, or at least they've talked to us, still waiting on the submittal, to completely abandon the building pad that they have and the tip, and the design of the home, and they want to do something now that follows more of the contours of the land than is sunk into the ground. That one will be a CDP, because it's, there's no part of that house that's the original home.
Can you give me an example of one that's outside of the appeals district that would not have to get a CDP at over 110 percent? Not a specific house, just a situation?
If you had a home that was, say, 3,000 square feet, and you were, say, up in the Malibu Park neighborhood, close to the high school, where you're surrounded by your infill development, and there's no drainages to cut through your property, anything like that, and you, I said 3,000, so 3,300 would be 10 percent. Say the person wanted to go to 3,500 square feet, something like that, if there's no deed restrictions, or anything that's going to trigger them being outside the exemptions of a coastal development permit, that would be something. Or another example, too, where this could happen, is if someone had, say, a 12-foot-high home, like a 60s-type home roof design, and that person, for whatever reason, wanted to keep the exact same square footage but have very tall vaulted ceilings, and they wanted to go up to 24 feet, that would be over the 10 percent as well, so that would be something that we would do different, because the, we'd have to, that would be over, that would be over the 110 percent because of height. That 10 percent is related to internal floor area, as well as the height of the building. If a building goes beyond 10 percent, then it would need something else, some other type of review.
So who decides? I mean, could almost anybody do that, or do you have to provide a view study or something, if you're doing something like that?
If somebody goes for their height increase, up to 18 feet, that's strictly just an administrative plan review, we'll do a written notice of decision. But consistent with the city's policies and municipal code, if they go above 18 feet, we most likely will require story polls, and we will do for certain a mailing of 500 feet around the home. I don't think we have any larger properties, R or 10, those are 1,000, 1,000 feet. But we would do a notice, a public notice, as a mailer, to all the properties within 500 feet, so neighbors would be notified of it.
But they wouldn't have any input?
They could.
Yeah, if there's a site plan review, then there's an appeals process that goes along with it, so it could get, the director decision could get appealed to the Planning Commission, could get appealed to City Council, so that regular appeals process is.
Is this only for Woolsey Fire, or could anybody with a house add, say, 20 percent, and just do it through you guys, and not, we never know about it?
And if you had a house that, I'll say it, Carbon Mesa, that didn't burn, and somebody had no deed restrictions on their home, and they wanted to add 1,000 square feet, and there were no deed restrictions, they were outside the appeal jurisdiction, and they did not trigger a septic upgrade, or anything that would require a coastal development permit, yes, they would do that through an administrative plan review. They could do height above 18 feet, we would do a neighborhood notice, but something like that would not come to the Planning Commission, because it would meet the exemptions under the Local Coastal Act, Chapter 13 of the LCP.
Has this always been this way, or is this something new?
Commissioner Mazza, this is the, we process hundreds of administrative plan reviews, some with site plan reviews and some without site plan reviews for development, all the time, for just, this is just regular course of business.
One more?
Go ahead, please.
Sorry, first off, thanks for adding that new breakdown, which had the secondary units ancillary. As I was seeing that, I was trying to visualize in my head, what are the total numbers on each of those? So it was something like 118 single families, et cetera, could we have kind of that, 118 out of, or 1, go back, that one? So like, of the total primary residences lost, is that a third? So maybe if we had something kind of, either there's a ratio or something, or a footnote just saying, of the 400 lost, of the 50 second dwellings lost, something like that, just to kind of have a sense of where we are, to kind of getting back to that normal.
That's about a third of the.
About a third?
It's about 450, 440 residences that were lost, so.
And then, and, accessory, et cetera?
Yeah, and then accessory, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, so something like that, I think, would help, along with that time series that Commissioner Hill was asking for, it would help just kind of see how we're doing against the, you know, the backlog, so thank you for that.
Two quick ones. At some point in time, you know, these houses that are outside, the built-as-is, or the 10 percent, and they're, how big are some of those things, just so we get some idea? You don't need to do that tonight if you don't have it. Second thing was, the fire victims had to apply within two years for something, or they, what was, I can't remember, what did they have to apply for?
Certainly. To your first point, we are tracking square footage, so we'll be able to prepare reports, so you could see how things have changed. The second part of your comment up there, would the code changes that were approved by the City Council after the fire, in general, for any disaster, it's not specific to this fire, you have two years from the date of the disaster to apply to the Planning Department and maintain all of your nonconformities.
Okay, so that keeps you under the 10 percent of the building, okay. Do we know, how many people have applied for that? Do we know? I mean, of the 400 or something, I'm just wondering, sort of tells you what the planning is doing, I think, or gives you a perspective.
The hard.
Later on, I don't need it tonight, just something.
Well, the hard part is that folks have filed for multiple applications, so we've had it where, what they, so the same owner may have filed three applications, one may be for the accessory structure on the property, one for the second unit, but to get to those deadlines, just so everybody's familiar with it, I think would be important to reiterate, so you have two years from the date of the fire, and if you don't have a submittal in, you need to file for an extension. That extension comes to this commission, it would be the decision of the Planning Commission to extend, to grant an extension to that person. And they have a total of four years from the date of the disaster to obtain building permits. And if they want an extension on that, they need to come to the Planning Commission as well.
The only reason I'm asking, and I wasn't at the Business Roundtable this Friday, or last Friday, whatever the hell it was, that apparently the Chamber of Commerce was talking about the impact to the businesses in Malibu from this, you know, the people who got burnt out and are not living here anymore. And I was just trying to get a sense that, you know, is there some bright light on the horizon that says, you know, they're coming back, or we're still debating, so, it was just trying to get some more information. Okay.
Excuse me.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
The, the numbers from the Planning Department are, look good, the Planning Department appears to be very receptive, but the big number to me is the 25 building permits that have been issued. And my wife is doing a lot of work with the Malibu Foundation, the Foundation is trying to reach out to people, try to help them through the process, and a lot of the feedback that she's getting is, there's a great deal of frustration in the process, which is just inherent in the process, it's not necessarily attributable to Malibu or anything else, it's just that building something, anything, for people who have never wanted to build anything, is a difficult process. But I did get through social media, or somehow, I got a notification that the city had hired a person who is going to basically try to help people through that process, is basically going to be a technician who, who will be, whose charge will be to attempt to guide people through the, the plan review, the, the plan check process. And I think that's a great step in the right direction, I want to applaud the city for having done that, hire more of them, because it's going to be needed.
And Bonnie, how is that supposed to work? What, how does that, what are they going to do that's going to help you?
So I believe her name is Ashley, and the Building Safety, Environmental Sustainability Department took the initiative to get that going through the City Manager's Office. It's, her position is intended to help people navigate, especially the, you know, planning has been able to streamline the planning side of things, but the, the building plan check part of it still remains fairly complicated for a lot of people, so her job is to help people negotiate through the, the plan check part of it.
Excellent. I mean, I think I agree with Jeff, I think that's something we need, and that should be very helpful. Okay.
Question?
John, go ahead.
They just indicated that we can, after four years, waive the fees on application?
No.
Well, I think Richard said that after four years.
No, 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 that's a submittal, it's a submittal deadline.
Yeah. Well, the submittal to get the fee.
No, it's not related, the, the council.
Okay, so after four years, you pay, right?
The, the ordinance Richard was talking about is just related to the permitting process. In terms of fee waivers, the City Council put a deadline on when fees, the fee waiver will end, and then they have the control, or the ability to change that and extend it, or do whatever they want.
And that's two years, right?
I actually don't remember how long the fee waiver goes.
Yes, I believe it's two years, and just to jump back, if anybody needs to get ahold of Ashley, her extension is 378 at the city, so the 3104562489, and then extension 378.
Excellent. Okay, Richard, thank you very, very much, you guys are doing a hell of a job. Oral and written communication to the public. Kathleen, do we have anybody? Nobody wants to speak, okay? Planning Commission, comments? Anybody?
I, I have a few.
Go ahead.
Looking for a little clarity on the primary view determinations, somebody complained to me that they paid 300 roughly for one, and then they're, they're wanting to exercise it now, and suddenly being asked to pay $2,500 something for that, and I just wondered, is that a normal thing, or was this somehow an unusual case, or, this person was feeling like, oh, this, we didn't ask for this, we thought the city takes care of this, not us.
The City Council, when the City Council passed the view protection ordinance some years ago, it, it did put in place a process for neighbors to negotiate with each other to resolve view disputes, that doesn't always end amicably. The City Council was also careful to try not to place the city in the big middle of what is essentially a civil issue, and so that, I think, is what is part of the confusion. The process, the view protection process sets up the ability for the person with the protected view to pursue a private right of action to resolve that, and so this, the intention, while it's possible for the city to spend all of its code enforcement resources on dealing with landscape disputes between individual property owners, the, the ordinance was designed to set up that ability for someone to have some leverage, because they've got a protective view to then take the other person to court as needed.
So in this particular case, that implies that they have tried and have not gotten through that party-party process, and this would now be the roughly 2,500 for the city code enforcement to step in?
I'm not sure exactly which part of the process, I think I know who you're talking about, and I don't know exactly where they're at in the process, to say specifically, but there is a, a mechanism for when there is not an agreement on, between the property owners, for the matter to be presented to the Planning Commission, and that involves a public hearing, and that, I believe that fee may be the one that is, that she's talking about.
Okay, I'll relay that, and hopefully.
Craig?
Yeah?
You should make sure you understand the difference between a view determination, where the city establishes what the view should be, it's already established, and a view, view, what's the other one, a view preservation? No, no, view preservation versus.
There's a, yeah, there's view restoration permit.
Restoration.
Restoration, that, that, in that case, you have to get the city, the city writes, and it comes to us, and they write a opinion on what the view was back in 1998. Then the owner has to take that to arbitration and then court, and that fee is probably view restoration, rather than view preservation, and that's a totally different deal.
Okay.
Okay. Greg Hill, any more?
Yeah, next, yeah, a couple, a couple more. Is, have we discussed ever scheduling simpler items like consent calendar towards the back end of the evening, and addressing the thornier cases earlier in the evening when we still have brain cells?
We do our best to predict, in, in theory, the consent calendar is a single vote, and that's it, so it shouldn't really take up, it's not expected to take up a lot of time, that's how things end up on the consent calendar. We, we try to, you know, if we know that there are going to be a lot of people to come and speak on something public, in, in the, on a, publicly in a public comment period, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult question, because you don't always want to keep a lot of people waiting for a long time, but then you also don't want projects not to get hurt at all, because there's so many speakers, so.
The idea is also to release people to simpler projects that hopefully are.
Right.
Just resolve a single vote, they don't have to wait till the end, just to have everyone confirm.
Yes, for the consent calendar, yes.
Well, I'd suggest we just all think about that and move on. Also, just a friendly reminder, I've noticed a couple points in staff reports where what I, I realized what I was reading was an opinion, and sort of conclusory, and not necessarily a statement of fact or law or policy, and it took me a while to, and I don't want to call anybody out, but just a reminder to, when it is an opinion, to say something like, staff's view is that, or our interpretation is that, you know, so it's, sometimes it's, it's not really clear if I'm reading, you know, a fact or settled law, or what somebody's, I don't know that we need a comment now, but just to be mindful of that.
Well, I just, I just want to say that staff is, does have to interpret facts and, and code, and situations, and plans, and things, so we do have an opinion, and it is, but we'll try to make it clear what.
To flag it as such, yeah. And then, okay, my big one, sea level rise, and I want to mention this while we, we don't have any beach cases in front of us, because I don't want to be prejudicial, but in the past few weeks or month, we've had a lot of sea level rise issues come up, including the council's declaration of the climate emergency, their approval of the coastal vulnerability study, Caltrans has just issued its vulnerability study, and we have state policy guidance, just general from the state, and also from the Coastal Commission. It's not a statute, but it's a standard that the commission would support in litigation. And their standard says that if, for low risk aversion, in other words, if you want to be reckless about what you're developing, they recommend that you add 40 inches to sea level rise by the year 2100, not the 18 inches that we've been using as our standard, but 40 inches. And if, they say if you want to be medium risk averse, we recommend 80 inches. And that was issued in 2018, it's already out of date, because there's been more science since then suggesting it could be even higher, like the IPCC just came out with a meta-study of 7,000 studies and models. Their most optimistic scenario by 2100 is that 40 inches. And incidentally, by 2,300, they expect 15 feet of sea level rise. Then a few days later, the European La Plas Institute, which works with the UN, came out with a new model of global temperature, suggesting by 2100, it won't be the 2 or 3 degrees centigrade that had been projected, but rather 7 or 8 degrees centigrade, that's 12 degrees Fahrenheit average higher. So that will have increased implications on sea level, too, presumably. So my take on this is that ideally, we'd go with something like Coastal's medium 80-inch recommendation, but I think from a legal standpoint, we need to just be saying, we'll, we'll go with the most risk averse, the most reckless standard, it's on you, but that should be 40 inches. I see that that will present a problem with garages on beach houses, so I think, as a practical thing going forward, we should be looking towards building the houses to that standard, keeping the garage at street level, and just having it step up, and then worst-case scenario, in the future, you might have to park across the street. So that's my comment on sea level rise, I wanted to make that public, because when we start seeing beach houses at 18 inches, I'm, I'm not going to be happy about that. And I think the Coastal Commission guidance is clear on this, and will provide a litigable standard that, that we can rely on, so that's my comment there, thanks.
Another comment on that?
John?
Quickly, I've been told by one of our local expeditors who's close to the Coastal Commission, that they were going to propose 5 feet. Bonnie, have you heard anything about that?
I haven't heard that specifically, and the City Council did just about, within the last two to three weeks, approve a professional services agreement for a coastal vulnerability assessment. That study is going to assess the city's risk across, you know, public property, private property, infrastructure, recreation, access, all those things, and then come up with potential strategies for dealing with those. That will eventually, not under that same contract, but the future second phase of that whole effort will involve a local coastal program amendment to address these things. In the meantime, you know, if the City Council wanted to direct some sort of adjustment to how the city coastal engineer deals with sea level rise in coastal engineering reports, they could do that, but at this point, you know, I think we've discussed before, we have our coastal engineering guidelines, and that's what we rely on, but that is in the works in terms of the city starting a coastal vulnerability study.
And the FEMA study is not over with, it's still?
The appeal with FEMA, you mean?
Yeah.
Over the MAPS? Yeah, I believe we did get a response from FEMA, I don't have an exact status on that, but it's, it is moving forward.
I think there's back and forth between FEMA.
Yeah, well, this is pretty critical to us, I mean, Trevor, right now, we just decide what, what, what the standard should be, because we had a bunch of experts come in and tell us it was 17 inches.
We, we have a standard that's, that's already put in place, and it's important that we're consistent, so if we want to make changes to that, it's for the City Council to direct that they're going to make changes on there, so that we keep it consistent between everyone. It wouldn't be fair on an ad hoc basis to sort of take this step by step.
So what, what is our standard? I thought we were using the 17 inches. I haven't ever seen anything that says, you shall use 22 inches or something like that.
Right, I believe that's what the Coastal Engineering Guidelines say, but I don't know. know that for certain. I don't know if anybody over there remembers.
Okay.
But...
One, one... Just to follow that, this might be getting a little abstract, but our job here is to support the public interest, and often that coincides with the city's interest too. But at a certain point, you know, if we, if the coastal commission, the state body is saying, "We want at least 40 inches," then I feel in, in representing the public interest that that's a legitimate number to apply.
But, as Bonnie said, we have to do a zone text amendment. We can decide any number we want, the coastal commission's going to change it to whatever they feel like.
The, in fact, our, I believe our study is, is taking advantage of some of the grant money that the coastal commission or the state has provided to encourage this whole process. But they, that's their intention, is that there be a publicly vetted process that, you know, assesses risk and, and everybody gets to weigh in on what...
That was the grant we applied for, with the coastal commission.
Right, and, and, you know, you have your opinion. My opinion is...
Relating coastal opinion.
No, I know, I know, but, you know, there's a huge, huge amount of money involved here. And you tell everybody in the colony they can't rebuild, that's a lot of money. So, because our, our rules go 28 feet, or I don't know what it is in the colony, from ground. I mean, that's it. So, a lot of houses can't be built if you start assuming these numbers, and it's not proven science. The guy that, the experts that came here said it went up a millimeter in the last five years or something.
It's for sure going to be a complicated issue.
Guys, we're going to be debating sea rise till we're all old and gray, so I, I move on.
Old and dead. I want to make one last comment. I'd like to dedicate this meeting to Jeff's 76th birthday and the fact that he's still working hard.
What I want to do is, is, before we close tonight, I'm going to ask everybody in the audience to join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Jeff. So, get, prepare for that, we'll get that done before...
Have to get it early. You're going to scare them all out.
Commissioner March, any comments?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. First, I did have, it was a fire-hardening visit to my house. Jerry Vandermeulen from the city came out and gave us some tips and tricks on kind of what to be ready for in terms of this coming fire season. If you call into the city, I think his extension, if you're dyslexic, you already got it, it's 387 versus 378, which was the prior one. And then the second thing, just on this whole, yeah, sorry, 387 is Jerry's extension. But the other thing I just want to call out, back in Ramirez, we got hit with flooding after the, after the fires, and I've been looking a little closer at kind of what, how to kind of guess what's going to be happening next season. What I've learned, just to kind of rule of thumb, if you're, if you're kind of wondering if we might have a bad season for rain, if you, if you hear how the temperature of, you know, you hear the El Nino effect is usually a warming of the ocean, you know, just off the coast, if the ocean temperature goes up by like 7%, that's about a 20 to 25% more intense storm probable to, like, that much more water can be carried in the air, et cetera. So, I know we're going to be, we're beating ourselves up on the sea level rise, but also the temperature can lead to just a lot more rain, a lot more flooding, so just be aware if you're in the valleys to, to be looking for that, because a few of our residents got hit really hard, so those in lower-lying areas also just be aware of that potential for, for, for more, for more rains. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner March, thank you. All right. Got just a couple quick ones. Over the beginning of this week, I started getting phone calls, and I talked to Bonnie about this a little earlier, about a party that took place over on the Malibu Playhouse, and the problem, I didn't, John's the social butterfly of our group, he would have got invited, I didn't. But I, people complained, apparently there were cars parked on PCH, people were doing U-turns across PCH, and apparently there's a better way than calling me to deal with these things, so Bonnie, could you give us some advice?
There are a couple of different options for if, if there is some loud party or something like that going on in your area, or some other thing that you're concerned about such as this. The city operates One Call to City Hall, which is available 24 hours a day. It generates an email that goes immediately to staff so that staff can begin to investigate right away. One of the problems with, you know, contacting planning commissioners or somebody after the fact is that the thing is already over and then it's harder to, you know, chase it down. So, One Call to City Hall is the city's regular number, 310-456-2489, which, incidentally, that spells city, two, it's, yeah, 456-CITY, and then extension 311, that's, will generate a voicemail to our answering service, which will then generate messages to staff so that we can begin chasing it down. Also, you can also directly email the city manager, and she will chase down anything that, that needs to be addressed as well.
Question. In, in a case like this, where they didn't call Saturday night or whatever it was at midnight, is there any repercussion if they haven't pulled a permit?
Yeah, we will be work, looking into it now after the fact with code enforcement.
So, is there a fine or something, or they just say, "No, no"?
Well, we have to investigate and find out.
I would just suggest, you know, if there's not a fine, we probably should, it would be good to put something in place. I think the last thing we want our city manager to do is, is compliance of parties on Saturday night, just make everybody's life a little...
Right.
Yeah, okay, got it. Okay. On Thursday of this week, there was a short-term rental analysis that was presented to the administrative and finance committee. And basically, what that was intended to do is to present the impact of short-term rentals on the city's budget. I mean, if we keep them, what's the impact? If we were to restrict them, what the impact would be? And it's important because on October 28th, okay, short-term rentals are coming before the city council, so if you've got an opinion on short-term rentals, get your opinion in place because you got to come to that meeting and let people know. And if you want to see that short-term, that, that financial analysis, it's an OnBase, okay? Now, I don't know how many people here know how to get into OnBase or know how to find it when you get into OnBase, but that's where it is. So, I'm going to try and get it put to a better location so people can see it because I'm, I'm going to guess there are 12 people in Malibu who know how to manipulate OnBase, but that, if they're lucky, okay.
For a quick comment, I went to OnBase to try to find it. I couldn't find it in OnBase, so...
Yeah, I'm saying, it's not an easy process. Okay, go ahead, John, do a quick.
When the city council, a year and a half ago, said get the financial analysis, they also said get what other cities are doing. Is there going to be a meeting on that, or is, how is that going to happen?
If, if you're ready for me to give my comments, I was going to elaborate on that.
Okay. I got one more. And at, at the business roundtable meeting, again, I mentioned to Richard, the Chamber Commerce talked about the impact, the loss of homes and the fire it's had on the businesses in Malibu and everything else, and I just, in the course of that, gathered some additional information. We got some enrollment numbers in the schools in Malibu, and these are not totally official, but they have been presented to Craig Foster, and he said they look pretty darn close. And what we got in Malibu High School now, there are 529 kids. 529 enrollees, I guess it better than the same kids. On Malibu Middle School, 339, so you got probably 850 kids in total in the high school. You got another 269 at Webster, and then 277 at the other, 1,400, 14 children altogether in Malibu schools, okay? That's a huge drop, okay? And I just think it's important to understand those numbers as we go forward because, you know, in the next couple, next week, I guess, through another organization, we're going to get a presentation of what the school district wants to do with rebuilding the Malibu High School. And their plans right now are to go back, they got a $190 million bond measure, they want another $300 million bond measure to finish the high school, and that amounts to like a half million dollars per kid, which seems like just something to think about. Now, the question is, one of the arguments is, boy, everybody's going to school over in the valley, and that's why these numbers are so low. There was a report from the Parks and Rec Commission, they came out recently that said that the combined usage of youth participation programs on the sports leagues decreased by about 35% this year. So, that sort of just suggested to me, it isn't the fact that kids who are living here went over this hill to go to school, it suggests the kids aren't here anymore. Just keep that in mind. That's all I got. Bonnie, to you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick things. As Commissioner Maza mentioned, or Commissioner Euring, the city council will be picking up the discussion of short-term rentals on October 28th, so that's two weeks from next Monday. That will include the reporting back on the financial analysis as well as the other information the council requested on what other jurisdictions are doing, and I don't remember all of the, the different things that they asked for, but all of the information they asked for will be provided at that meeting. Let's see, a couple other quick things. On Monday, October 14th, the city council subcommittee on zoning ordinance revisions will be meeting, let's see, at 3:00 PM. And the, one of the topics that will, the topic for that meeting will be the fire-resistant landscape ordinance, so that will be 3 o'clock next Monday. That staff report should be out in the next day or so. Let's see, at the next planning commission meeting, October 21st, we will be bringing forward the zoning text amendment to address the farmer's market parking, as well as the westward beach road public access improvements. And then, we're tentatively looking at bringing back the accessory dwelling unit ordinance in early December. And I think that is all that I have.
Is La Plas still scheduled for the end of October? You guys still working on that, or is that still...
We're, we're looking at a, a meeting date in November.
November, okay, gotcha. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 3B2 and 3B3.
Okay. 3B2. Richard, is that you?
Do you want to make a motion on...
Oh, make a motion.
On number one.
Can you get a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Richard, could you take us through 3B2?
Did you want a full staff report, or just, did you have questions?
John, what do you guys think?
A, a medium staff report, how about that?
I've got the applicant with us this evening, Eric, he can also answer any questions you may have. The status with this project is that this is the first extension. The applicant is seeking to actually have the property, at this point in time, there's discussions of the property changing hands. The new owner has a potential redesign that we have looked at in the planning department. That redesign actually reduces the massing of the home. However, we have not stamped any plans that enter into plan check because of the expiration date, and we're requiring them to process this extension. So, my understanding is that after this evening, the project will be able to move forward. The potential buyer has intentions of getting this into the plan check process completed and getting under construction. At this point, the only work that's taken place to date is the owner, current owner of the property, did submit some plans for staff to put their green stamp on so that it could be submitted to the plan check, get into the plan check process, and I believe they did that with grading.
Thank you, I think that's good. We have a speaker slip, anybody, first, any disclosures?
No.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Well, let me ask a question, so we don't, we can cover it all at once. Has anything happened on the project other than putting in for a permit on January 19th, this year? Have they, have they pulled any permits? Have they dug any holes? Have they done anything?
No, no work has taken place on site. We have not issued a final, you'd require a final approval from the planning department. That has not happened, so building permits cannot be issued at this time.
Okay, thanks.
I need clarity on really what we're reviewing here, because, I mean, it looks like an extension, but if there are enough substantial changes happening that if they get the extension, this has to come back for a de novo review, is that right? Or is some of this already automatically approved if and when it comes back?
If the changes that they are proposing went outside of the footprint, the bulk and mass, or changed one of the findings or determinations made by the planning commission, then it would be back. The owner is simply reducing massing and square footage, so something like that, because it's within the, the box that was approved by the planning commission, making something less, unless, of course, they wanted to say go from two-car garage to a one-car garage, but making it less and staying consistent with the code is not something that would change any of the findings or determinations made, and it's within the purview of the planning director to approve those types of changes.
Commissioner, okay?
Yeah, I probably have some more questions, but...
Okay. Mr. Rasmussen, we got to speak, would you have, want to say something? Would you like to make any comments?
Thank you very much, commissioners and Chair Euring. Just here to speak on behalf of extending, it's, it is our first extension request, I think you understand that. We have been diligently pursuing the redesign and the tinkering around the edges of the CDP that was issued and approved, and I, I, I'm uncomfortable making excuses, but I guess I could take a moment to acknowledge the fact that I actually am here as a representative of my father, who has been afflicted with Parkinson's disease for the last 17 years, and it does, it does have an effect on the pace at which things progress. So, I, I just mentioned that as another medical reason why things don't necessarily progress as quickly as we'd like in a world where things are already quite difficult, as, as you all know. I don't have much more to add, but I am more than happy to answer questions, and I don't want to take up...
Stay in front in case we have any questions. Yeah, if we got questions, we'll call you back up, so stay in the front in case anybody has anything to add. Any commissioner comments?
Well...
I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I should have opened it, but I'm, I've now closed it.
Just to set things the way I understand them, I'm going to make a motion to deny the extension because of two things. One, the owner is a large construction company with a large staff, which to me negates the last excuse, and actually, virtually nothing has been done in this project. So, due diligence, as far as, is required, and as far as I'm concerned, it's not taken place. Also, specifically in the extension, it says that redesign and change architects and owner does not, is not a reason for extending a permit. Now, in this case, that's obvious. They've, they've come out and said, "Here's the redesign." So, to me, it's merely a way to sell the property. And I think if they come back with a reasonable house, they can come back with a regular CDP and we can review it, rather than just taking our chances on whatever happens, happens.
Anybody got a second? Second?
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay.
Short of...
Any other further conversation? Go ahead.
No, that's, that, unless... Can I respond to that comment, please?
Yeah, well, yeah, let me just give us, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, please, come on up.
Mr. Maza, I would like to point out the fact that you are sorely mistaken when you, I guess, make the inference or assumption that my father runs a large construction firm. I am his only employee. There are, well, there are two other girls in the office. I believe you have conflated him with my uncle, Charlie, perhaps, and I just want to point that out. And Parkinson's excuse is no joke, it is not something that could so easily be swept aside to say that he has a large staff, which is a false statement, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If I can pick up on what Commissioner Maza was saying, then the problem with the Parkinson's is that that's a long-term progressive thing, and it's obviously terrible, but this rule is about unforeseen circumstances, you know? If you got hit by a bus or had bird flu and in the hospital or something, but you've got time, you can figure it out, you can get it, you can get an expediter. And can I ask who, on the signage up there, who is Kathleen? Is that...
My stepmother.
Your stepmother?
Yes.
So, she appears to be a Realtor advertised, so she has some, she could presumably be helping with her expertise, right? I mean...
I will, I...
Yeah. Yeah. So, it just seems like that this is not an, it's a terrible experience, but it's not an unforeseen, it's not something that you can't plan around by hiring an expediter or any number of different approaches.
Here, the only, but look, I don't know, a couple of years ago, Bonnie, and I, I, there was a ZERACIS meeting where you and I think it was Stefan Igalov, I can't remember, went in front of the plan, the ZERACIS and said, you know, "We want to find a way to deal with these extensions, because these extensions are coming in, people are, they get a permit, they delay it..." Because these extensions are coming in, people are, they get a permit, they delay it, they come back, they want to redo the house, so we got to go back and redo it again. And everybody said, boy, we'd like to sort of minimize that process going on. And I listened to you, all right? And subsequent to that point in time, staff has not really denied very many extensions, but I'm going to join with John on this one, because there's, nothing's been done. This, there's been no process to get your, the house is up for sale, you guys, you're looking to sell it, or it's going to come back. And I agree with John, if you want to sell it, somebody wants to come back, let them come back with a new design, we'll run it through the process and make sure we do it right. So I want to join these two guys. Anybody else?
Yeah. The, the, the Commission has, and staff, has restricted the availability of extensions to a significant degree. But the thing that gets lost, I think, in the discussion is that denying an extension is, just increases staff work, increases the amount of money that's spent to absolutely no good end. And I know that the Commission feels like they need to be as punitive as possible, but in my view, this is, this is the wrong way to go about it. And so I'm going to vote to grant the extension.
And just, and Jeff, and I, you know, I've always listened to you. I'm not trying to be punitive, I'm trying to go back to the process when, again, when they went to ZERACIS and said, you know, this process of having a permit, people holding on to it, trying to sell the house, coming back and doing revisions, was something that was causing more disruption in the, in the planning staff than not. So I'm going to, I'm going to agree with the staff and stick with these two guys, so.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, I just wanted to, because I'm just, you know, I want to make sure we're following Policy 5, and there are two parts of it. And I want to focus on the applicant has exercised due diligence, et cetera. Can we have any comment from staff just on what all has been completed in terms of what it says here? Necessary studies, reports, drawings, plans to pursue the plan check process. I don't know if you heard all that, Richard, but do you have any comment on what has been completed there by the applicant?
I'm sorry, actually, we were checking something else, because I don't mean to be rude, but please repeat yourself.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I want to make sure we're following Policy 5, and specifically the clause that talks about the due diligence and having completed studies, reports, drawings, plans, et cetera. Can you give any input on what's been completed by this applicant? And kind of, maybe even just some context on if this is kind of normal for, you know, kind of progress for this point?
To date, the applicant was working, the reviews, and Eric, Eric can jump in and explain, explains a bit better. But what they had put together would be their geotechnical submittals, grading plans, the engineering that would go into that. They had also, they do have architectural plans. I'm not aware of those architectural plans making it into the plan check process yet. Now, they may have done the structural engineering. But the engineering that, to date, that I have seen has been the geotechnical engineering. That has been completed. And in terms of process, we have brought similar applications like this before to the Commission. And the, essentially, because this is kind of a common occurrence, that is why the City Council said that they had up to five years, or five extensions, and then after that, there would be an end on that, because people were asking for additional time to complete these technical reports.
Commissioner Mazza, there was a question raised. Did you recuse yourself on this item previously? I see that you were absent. Did you recuse on this item?
No, I don't believe I did. I may have been absent for a meeting.
He recused himself from that original approval power.
Can you speak up at the podium? And do you know why?
I believe it was because he had already voiced a prejudicial opinion on the project. But you were present, and we can review the record. Commissioner Mazza recused himself from the CDP approval. And that would be a question I would ask of the city attorney, whether or not Mr. Mazza can vote to deny an extension of a, of a, of a CDP, which he recused himself from in the initial granting of. And I would also just like to recap, as in the staff report, on February 25th, architectural plans were approved to be submitted into plan check, and then once again revised on March 6th of this year. And then the project is now being held up, because we were on the brink of expiring CDPs, and they said, well, we'll take it into plan check after you extend the CDP. It was as if it were a foregone conclusion, as if this wouldn't occur here tonight. And for reasons that I don't understand, you would nullify the fact of a medical, personal reason, and say, I don't know what you, I, I'm not, I'm not clear on the reasoning that's going on here. However, I find it to be, I vigorously object, obviously. It's just an unjust process. If you do not grant us an extension, it's not, it's not much we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me answer the question that recuses.
How much money have we spent? Several hundred thousand dollars. If you'd like, if that would enter into your calculator.
Okay, thank you.
Trevor.
Yep.
In the first 10 years I was on the Planning Commission, I probably lost probably a third of the votes, okay? That doesn't, in my mind, even if I had recused myself, I have no memory of that, I've only recused myself on probably four items in 20 years, or 10 years. If, if you vote against something, you can't vote against an extension?
I don't think that's the issue here. Kathleen did confirm that you did recuse yourself. I don't know the reason why at this point. So my suggestion would be that, that you recuse yourself from this item. Alternatively, we could take a break and we can look into what the issue was. But if you're recused on it before, I would suggest in abundance of caution that you recuse yourself from this item.
Okay, well, okay, so...
I can ask a question in the meantime, while you're pondering that.
Well, let's do this.
No, no, if he's going to recuse himself, he should leave the room.
But why would I, if I voted against something, then I don't have to recuse myself?
I don't know, it's not an issue of what you voted.
One's based on the facts of the appeal, which is, were they diligent? Did they file their stuff on time?
Let's assume...
The other's based on the facts of the original approval.
I don't know the details of why you recuse, so I'd suggest...
I don't either.
Okay, let's just assume that you didn't go forward, because we'll be here all night long.
The minutes, the minutes reflect he did.
The minutes reflect he did.
That's what you're seeing?
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I didn't know that either. Okay, so let me go back. I will make the motion.
Hold on, let's wait for Commissioner Mazza to leave the room.
So his motion's withdrawn at the moment? It has to be re...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll redo it soon.
Well, let's just wait for Commissioner Mazza to step out. All right, Commissioner Mazza's now left the room, and any comments that he made, I ask you to disregard his, any comments about this item.
Okay, I will make a motion to deny the extension.
I still would like to ask a few questions.
Go ahead.
Is any part of this based on the notion that the property has been resold? Is that part of why we're asking for the extension, or is it just the illness?
They said they got another buyer. They got a potential buyer.
Yeah, because I, the tax assessor website says it was sold in 2018 for $50,000, and I don't understand what, that, that just doesn't, what is that, what was that?
I, I'm not, I can't speak to the, what you just referenced. It could be a lot line adjustment which occurred. That was a totally separate issue. Our neighbor, in order to accommodate his development, we allowed him to process a lot line adjustment. And so that could be it, and I'm just speculating.
I don't know how they...
However, the property has not been sold for at least 20 years, I believe. And no, the answer is a flat, no, it has not been sold.
Okay.
And that is, that has nothing to do with the reason for this extension. The reason for the extension is running out of time in the course of things. Although, we have pursued diligently, as evidenced in the staff report, and we did submit, and we are ready to go into plan check as soon as this extension is granted, which all, all parties thought was a foregone conclusion.
So, Richard, what triggered the redesign, then? And, and maybe part of that question is, why are so many of the variances that were applied for in 2011 given, labeled with 2016 numbers?
Those are just case assignment numbers, and it just happens, you know, if, if, during the course of the review of a project, if a compliance issue isn't identified until late in the game, then it, the case number associated with the variance request will be a different year than what the CDP is.
Maybe more to the heart of my question is, we're calling this a three-year deadline that was passed, but how then is it that this was started in 2010 or 2011? And how did we get on to, I mean, are we talking about truly only three years, or this is a longer process that, that nothing much has been done on?
The project was originally applied for in 2011. It was not approved until 2016. So when we look at the window of time to act, they had three years from 2016. They couldn't act prior to 2016. And part of the delay here was the fact of the lot line adjustment. And I believe from discussions with the neighbors, Representative Lynn Hecox, because we had to renotice this, I believe that that transfer you see there on the assessor's information, and I also think if you look at the assessor's data, there was a slight difference in the parcel number. And that is because of the lot line adjustment.
Got a motion. Do you want to give me a second?
I believe the only variance was for height, which is a fairly standard thing to, to keep the massing of the building smaller. So we did, I believe we did ask for that.
Thank you, sir.
Site plan review, not a variance.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
I have a comment.
Okay, Jeff, I'm sorry.
I can't recall an occasion where, this is the first request, is that not right?
Yes, you are correct.
I can't recall a single instance, as long as I've been on the Commission, where a first request was denied.
I'm just, look, I'm going, in, Policy 5.
You're stating a fact, you're not excusing.
No, I'm not, I'm just stating a fact also. The policy says that change of project ownership or architect and redesign, you're not themselves constitute due cause. That's what it says. I, I didn't make that up.
No, it's a staff policy. It controls what staff does. It doesn't control what you do, doesn't control what the City Council does. It's a staff policy.
It also notes a personal reason such as illness is a valid reason.
Okay, thank you, sir. Roll call, please, Kathleen.
Can I confirm the motion is to deny the request for failure to demonstrate due cause for the extension, so I correct?
Correct.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
No.
Vice Chair Jennings?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so that means that the, what does that mean?
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
Can we get another motion, or you want to have further discussion?
I just, I just want to, I mean, I'm, I'm also trying to follow, this policy is all we have to follow. And when I, when I look at just what's been reported is what's been done. I see due diligence made. As to whether or not what is right now most pressing to this family, it appears that the fact the place is about to be sold. But I can't deny that there's an impact from an illness, and that is part of the code also. So, I mean, in terms of my read of this, it just says, this is a case where they appear to be doing the work, you know, he's, he's done the investment, he's got the, the steps that Richard's confirmed. I just don't see this as, as much different. And there is a family illness, which even though, granted, you can plan around it, you got to, you got to accommodate that, but illnesses, you know, throw life in weird ways, and so your priorities get all shifted. So even though it seems kind of academic that, yeah, you could have done your work ahead, I, I just don't, I see this code supporting their extension.
Commissioners, if I could just add also another option, staff's recommendation, we, staff's evaluation of it also was to, to place a fair amount of weight on the, the family illness. That being said, the staff recommendation was for a two-year extension. The Commission could also consider a one-year extension. That would place the expiration to July of 2020, which would be not that many months down the road for them to finalize all of the plans and everything and get the construction started.
And, and what happens if they sell the property and then if somebody else comes back in to redo it? What, how does that fit into that date?
Well, then if, you know, they haven't initiated construction, commenced work on the application, then they would need to either, you know...
Come back for another extension request at 20, okay, I'll buy that. So I'll make a motion that we grant the extension up until the date for one year? Give them a one-year extension?
Yeah, one-year extension.
Okay.
A one-year extension from the date of expiration.
Right, so I got, I got a motion, I got a second. Kathleen, roll call.
Who seconded it?
Commissioner Marks.
Thank you. Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, done. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along. The next item is, we got to get John back in. Where's John?
He's coming. I think we have the minutes.
We got the minutes.
Can I ask a sort of administrative procedural question that reflects back on that application but is not substantive? Simply, this, the request excuse letter was included in the paper packet, but not the digital PDF packet. So it was not available online. I just wondered if that was inadvertent, or...
The, the paper packet and the online packet are intended to be the same thing, so if it was left out...
They should be, but they, but it wasn't in this case.
Okay, well, we'll double-check that and I'm not, it might have been a scanning error.
John, you pulled the minutes. Yes, and just a quick question on the minutes for 7:15, which is when we approved the Chili Cook Off CUP. We required that the taxes be, parking taxes be collected. And my only question is, were they collected?
Yes, yes, they were.
They were. Okay, that's it. I move we approve 3B3.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Second?
I second.
All in favor, right, okay. Moving along, next one is, item, I think, 5F?
4F.
4F.
Right.
4F. Tito, you're up.
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Planning Commission. The next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit amendment for a project located at 6737 Walleye Road. The property is located within the Point Dume residential neighborhood in the rural residential one-acre zoning district, and it is approximately 1.4 acres in size. The previously approved project consisted of CDP 10-009. It consisted of partial demolition of the existing residence, conversion of the existing residence to a second unit, addition of attached garage and separate attached office, demolition of the detached garage and OWTS, new two-story single-family residence with a basement, a detached garage with studio above, a new bridge connecting the garage/studio attached to the second unit and the new residence, new OWTS and associated development. The project also consisted of a site plan review 10-006 for construction in excess of 18 feet in height to allow for a pitched roof at 28 feet in height. The, the CDP amendment before you today is number 18-009. The proposed amendment project scope is seeking to maintain the existing residence as is, which is closer to Fernhill Drive, as you see on the site plan, maintain the existing detached garage as is, replace the previously approved residence, which is highlighted in that yellow outline. That was the previously approved 5,199 square foot home. And it's being replaced with a smaller accessory structure containing a media room, garage, gym, swimming pool, bathroom, and changing room. And that media barn is in that lighter gray hatch pattern, and I put a call-out media barn. And construction of multiple detached trellis structures, which are highlighted in yellow and the green. And the overall changes include a reduction of 2,000, 2,800 square feet of the previously permitted TDSF, and reductions to impermeable coverage and grading. This project, this new project also eliminated the need for a site plan review. All construction will be under 18 feet in height. The applicant will continue with the construction of certain components of the previously approved scope of work, including hardscape, the swimming pool and spa, entry gates, pool... the swimming pool and spa, entry gates, pool decking, pool equipment and enclosure, outdoor barbecue area, landscaping, and OWTS. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 19-55 approving the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and staff are available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a few.
You want to go, staff? We got, the applicant's here to speak, or one of you are in first, or you want to go to the question?
I think staff questions here, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I'm trying to get a handle on what the nexus is to the pre-existing CDP that expired. For example, which, if any, of the permits issued for the ancillary things, the pool, the spa, and the gate, were issued before the expiration date?
It didn't, it didn't expire. This is an amendment to it.
Yeah.
December 18th, 2018?
Page two of the staff report says it expired. Did it? I thought this was a CDP amendment.
Yeah. Well, the applicant can speak on that, but I did include that on page two. So they did get an extension on December 18th, 2017, extending the expiration of the CDP to December 18th, 2018. However, a grading permit has been issued for the site, swimming pool, spa, and pool bathroom, and building permits have been issued for the swimming pool, spa, and driveway gates.
And so those, those other permits were issued before the expiration of the main permit?
Yes, that is correct.
So the CDP is active and it's an amendment.
Okay.
And we should maybe do disclosures. I apologize. Any disclosures?
No.
John?
No.
I visited the property, saw the pool under construction.
And I visited with Carl. So I agree, the pool is in, the grading's done, I mean, that stuff has all been taken care of.
Okay, so that, so I guess we have more substantive questions, but that, that.
Let me ask a quick question. So in your opinion, Trevor, it's vested?
We don't use that term, but.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's not a term under the L I P. But the construction has commenced, so at this point, it's an active CDP. And so they can continue to build that house. If you don't approve the amendment, they would have to build the approved project rather than the amendment.
We use the term "they got it in under the wire."
So the staff report did not mean to say it was, that it expired?
Well, it says it's still active.
Yeah.
It extend, extended the ex, it was maybe a confusing way to word it, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I do have one more, staff.
Right.
I'm just, I'm also trying to understand. So we started with a permit initiated in 2010, 10-009, reading the page one. Then there was an amendment in 18. And was that with the extension that got us through to December 2018? Or was there another amendment earlier on? I'm just, again, I'm just, the paper trail in this, like, Commissioner Hill, I've kind of got a little confusion on how we got here.
There was only one previous extension, and they got that extension approved. Then they pulled the building permits, and now they, then they submitted for the amendment, which is dated 18-009. So there was only one extension and the amendment.
Got it. And it's 18 since they put it in late last year. Got it. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just have one comment. When I read your staff report, I almost called you. Suggest you had a typo, because you said the property was being decreased in size. You don't see that very often, but go ahead. I'm sorry. Charles.
While he's coming up, the swimming pool is in the, in the building?
Yeah.
Is it inside?
No, no, it's not inside. It's outside the building.
Okay.
I think there's a bathroom, a pool bathroom or something in the building.
Charles, you want to?
Good evening, Chair hearing and commissioners. I made a presentation. I could go through some of the history. I think it'll probably help paint a picture of the project. So this is actually an old site plan from the previous CDP that was approved for the previous owner. So the current owner purchases property from a previous owner who had done all this work and wanted to demolish a portion of the existing residence, convert it to a second unit, guest unit, and build a 5,200 square foot house with an 834 square foot basement. So right there is the existing residence in the garage that the current owner is going to keep. And then that was the proposed new two-story house that was approved back in 2011. That's a rendering of the 5,200 square foot house that was approved by the planning commission. Those are some height call-outs, just for reference, the 28-foot height, and then the one-story 14-and-a-half-foot height. I'm calling that out to give you a little reference as to what's being proposed today. It's basically about three feet higher than that one-story condition. So this is a proposed site plan. Existing residents and house will remain. The accessory structure is 1,800 square feet. And the red is an overlay of what was previously approved, to give you an idea of the reduction in the footprint. This is just in general. I know in Point Doom, you can't develop on slopes greater than four to one, so we show the four-to-one slopes, and then our proposed development is clearly outside of that area. Just another overlay of the structure itself, site plan. Outdoor kitchen to the left. So the pool is permitted under construction. I have photos of all that. And there's an outdoor fireplace right there. These are some renderings. This is a rendering looking northwest of what the structure will look like. You can see it's one story. 17 feet, eight inches. Some more renderings. This is an aerial rendering that shows the existing residence on the left, the proposed accessory structure on the right. And we also included the neighbor's house to the north, because we did decrease the height of the accessory structure from two-story to one-story. There was a concern about privacy. There were previously two windows off of mezzanine on the second story, and we deleted the second story altogether to appease the neighbor. This is a floor plan. It shows the, a breakdown of the structure itself. There's a gym, movie theater, garage, changing room, and pool bath. All separate, separate units. Elevations showing the north and south, 17 feet, eight inches tall. The south, the south is an important elevation, because that's where we previously had two windows off of mezzanine. And as you can see, there's no windows off the south. There's no issue with, with privacy with the neighbor. Earthworks exhibit. This is a view from the street. This is on Wildlife Road. So it's hard to see, but there's a stucco wall that's been constructed. That was the first permit we, we pulled in August of 2018, and started construction on that immediately. This is a view of the job site looking, looking to the west. So that's just behind the stucco wall, looking into the property. You can see the grading was already done for the, the rough grading for the pad. The pool's in the back left. And just right here to the right is going to be the accessory structure. Here's the pool. That photo was taken just last week. Started construction on that this year. Grading and the stucco wall in the front that was started last year, before the CDP permit expired. That's a view looking north, northeast. And this is also a view looking east. To the left, there are some stakes. And these stakes here outline the accessory structure. The tractor's a little bit in the way, but basically the accessory structure goes here. I think that's all I have.
Very much. All right, let me close the public comment and open it up for any questions.
Your address is Wildlife. So is that considered your entrance?
So that is considered the official approved main entrance. It was approved by planning department. I had discussions with this, with Mary Ann about it. She really wanted us to get the project going, because the address was approved for Wildlife. And because it's approved for Wildlife, if the fire department's called out, they're going to come in off of Wildlife. So I got fire department approval for fire truck access into Wildlife, into the property.
Is there another entrance on Fernhill?
There still is an entrance on Fernhill.
It's fenced in now, isn't it?
It is.
So there's no entrance, right? Do you have, do you have an encroachment permit for fire, for Fernhill?
That I don't know.
Is there an existing driveway?
When I got involved, there was always an entrance off of Fernhill that was fenced in. As far as I know, there's probably a knock, a knock box still on there that allows the fire department to get in and out.
Okay, the, the second question then is, if the primary entrance is on Wildlife, why do you have over a 42-inch fence? I'm sure any, any permit we approved had a front yard fence height and gate height.
It was, so it was an existing wall, stucco wall, and they refinished it.
Okay, so that's, that was approved, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah. And broadly, I think it's, it's great that you've cut down the TDSF 2,800 square feet and aren't doing all the grading that the other one proposed. I'm still following John's comment. I'm a little concerned about the future possibility of having two residences here, because you've got the two driveways. And the way the media barn is configured, it looks like it would be really easy to make it into a habitable unit. You know, that that could, and so I don't know if that's something that we could put a deed restriction in, that it's not, that it can't be, or I don't know what.
What is the size of the lot?
The size of the lot?
Yes.
You're heading towards a subdivision?
Oh, yeah, you can't subdivide under an acre on Point Doom. So we'd have to worry about it if it's under two acres.
It's 1.4 acres.
Okay, so they could not do that.
So they can't do that. Okay. Then my, my other concerns are, have to do with it being a media barn. It doesn't look, and I've, I've designed a few studios. It doesn't look to be particularly acoustical in the design. You don't have, like, double walls, for example, or, or even staggered stud construction. It looks like it's like standard two-by-four sill plate. So I'd, I'd be concerned about the several neighbors. If you really want to be cranking it up in there, you might be wanting to build more serious walls there.
I could, the architects here, you can answer probably questions better than I can.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to hear what, what the rationale on it is, because it, it doesn't really look like a, I don't know. I think a media barn would feel like a studio design. It's, it looks a little lighter than that.
I think it's a little beachy, because it's next to the pool, but.
Yeah.
And there's some distance between building and the neighbor behind it there. So there, it isn't like they're sitting right on top of each other.
No, no, there's a.
What, what, I'd like to hear from the architect, just what.
Sure.
You know, and whether there's flexibility in that, or? I guess a specific question is whether that, the wall on the north side between them and the neighbor, if that would be like two-by-eight plates with staggered studs or something, or is?
Sure. The, the plan, good evening. The plans that are shown are still, architecturally can be developed. And this media room is not intended to be a, a true screening room, where it's going to have dullby atmosphere or anything like that. It's really for gathering and, and glorified TV watching. It's not meant to be a true screening room blackout the whole, the whole nine yards. But it will be, you know, we will have, we, we still have the opportunity to do double stud walls, isolating channels, acoustic implementations through the, through the building process.
Okay, well, I'd just call out as, as a word of caution with neighbors, if, if you start heading that direction, to definitely.
Absolutely.
Look ahead on that one.
Yeah, but it's definitely not meant to be a true screening room.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess that's it for me. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I move, I move the item be approved, 4F.
Need a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Done. Thank you. All right, moving along, we're down to item 5C, is it? 5A. Oh, yeah, 5A. Administrative Plan Review Number 18065, variance 19019, application for a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic, I can't even say the word, system and associated development. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair hearing and members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is an administrative plan review and a variance for construction of a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system on steep slopes. Review and approval of APRs would generally fall under the purview of the planning director. However, since the subject application includes a variance request, the decision must be rendered by the planning commission. The approximately one-acre parcel is a flag lot located on the north side of Baylor Road in a residential neighborhood in the RR5 zone. The property is currently developed with a single-family residence, a swimming pool, and landscaping. The property boundaries are outlined in black in the aerial photo shown here. The, the flag portion of the lot has been cut off to, to show detail. Topographically, the property consists of a pad that's shown in yellow in the center of the property with steep slopes descending from the north, as shown here, to the south towards Baylor Road. Sorry, let me turn on a laser. The existing residence is shown in white right here. This is the swimming pool. With the exception of the building pad, lawn, swimming pool area, and driveway, slopes on the site are generally two, 2.5 to one, as shown in the orange area. The location of the solar panels are outlined in pink at the top of the parcel. Aside from the building pad, the site does not contain flat areas that could reasonably accommodate the solar panels. The ground-mounted solar voltaic system would be 44 feet, eight inches in length and 20 feet in width. And would be approximately two feet high, parallel to the existing grade. The applicant did consider a roof-mounted system, but due to potential damage to the tile roof, the presence of skylights, lack of the surface area, and more shade coverage compared to the proposed location, the applicant did propose to apply for a variance for the solar panels on steep slopes. The area to the south of the residence was also considered, but this location also contains steep slopes. This photo shows the location of the solar panels, which would be about here. Although the photovolta, although the solar system would be located on slopes deeper than two to one, 2.5 to one, no landform alteration would occur. And as discussed in the agenda report, the variance findings for the proposed project can be made, but that staff recommends approval of the project, and I'm available for any questions.
Billy, thank you very much. Any disclosures?
None.
None.
None, okay. Questions, staff?
None.
Done.
Get a motion?
Do we use our speakers?
Are there any speakers? I haven't got any speakers, Louis.
Open and close it.
I'll open it.
Then I have some comments.
Open it, close it. Go ahead.
I have some concerns. Is there, one, one is that the, the panel, the corner of the array looks to be nearly touching the driveway above. It's very close to it. And one of the photographs shows that the edge of that driveway is started, the asphalt is cracking, and the edge is sort of starting to lean away, suggesting that that driveway will want a retaining wall at some point in the near future. And so my concern would be, what is the interaction between the corner of the panel and any retaining wall that needs to fit there? And is that something they're looking out for?
That wasn't analyzed as part of the proposed project. The solar panels will be three feet from the property line, which is the setback requirement for, for this type of project. And on the other side of the, of the property line where the road is, is on a separate property.
On the diagram, it looks like the corner of the array is actually touching the edge of the driveway or inches from it. So, and that driveway does show a crack in the asphalt, like the edge of the driveway is starting to. asphalt, like the edge of the driveway is starting to tilt, tilt down, so it just seems like that's something that you want to call out and, and look at, and apropos, I would wonder why they didn't orient the array to the south rather than southwest, because that would get more efficient production from the panels, and it would be slightly against the grain of the slope, but with the height of the supports, they could probably fit that, so. I don't know, but we don't have the applicant here, so.
Well, I, I will just point out that, um, as long as they continue to meet the setbacks for the property, they could adjust the location a little bit, and it would, you know, not, not be a major problem.
I'm assuming the guy who's putting the solar panels in will align them so they get the most sunlight.
Okay, and it, the plan says they want to use schedule forty or schedule eighty for the supports, and I would just say, let's make sure, I don't know if we need to condition, but make sure it's schedule eighty because of the extra strength and UV, like if they have deer leaping around there, they don't want the thing to break. Schedule eighty lasts a lot longer, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as stated. Uh, Trevor, can we add, uh, a required review of the slope next to the driveway? Just to, not that they have to put anything in, but just to review.
Uh, what do you want them to review exactly?
Whether it's stable, or Bonnie, is that automatic?
Um, well, the driveway, nothing to do with the driveway is part of this application, um.
But apparently, what Craig's saying is the hill's moving, driveways don't crack and.
There, you can see in one of the pictures that, yeah, there's a crack.
It's the edge of it, it's, it's not a lot, but it's suggestive that, you know.
Or is that just something geology does? Well, geology's already done it, right?
Yeah, geology has reviewed the solar panel array, um, it, it's really up to the property owner to pay attention to whether his driveway is cracking.
I'm not worried about the driveway, I'm worried about solar panels.
Well, those will have their own footings that will be independent of anything to do with the driveway.
So I move the project as proposed.
Uh, do we want to add the schedule eighty only, it says or forty?
Just say that's a, a, something, a recommendation, I don't think we need to.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second?
A second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done, thank you very much.
Great.
All right, we're down to, go back five C. Coastal development permit nineteen oh twenty-nine, site plan review number nineteen oh five oh, the application for the construction of a new single-family residence, detached second unit, detached pool, bath and associated development, including a site plan review for height in excess of eighteen feet, up to twenty-eight feet for a pitch roof on Zumeris Drive, and you're up.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Planning Commission. The following item is a coastal development permit for a new single-family residential development project that inadvertently expired, uh, so going back to the discussion we're having previously about expired projects, um, this project, um, as a, as an expired project, did end up taking a lot of time, so unfortunately, um, we wish we would have, uh, realized that the application was expiring prior to it, um, because that would have saved a lot of time, but in this case, um, it did expire, um, the applicant, um, was working, during this time to, uh, go through the plan check process, and it was at the very end uh, stage of, um, the plan check, uh, process when they realized that the application had expired. Um, prior to the expiration, a new owner, um, hired an architect to architecturally modify the project, and while these changes were underway, um, the, um, commission granted the project's last extension, which was an eighteen-month extension. The changes resulted in a smaller building envelope because, per staff's, uh, direction, the applicant revised the project, um, in order to comply with a basement, uh, policy that was, uh, in place after the original house was approved, but, um, as the house was designed at the time, it no longer complied, so since then, like I said, they revised the project, uh, to meet the most current basement policy, and they've also updated, um, the house plans to, um, comply with, uh, you know, all the code requirements and, including, uh, TDSF, uh, in, um, complying with TDSF because their basement now qualified as, uh, total development square footage, they had to shrink the size of the house and, um, reduce some of the massing, um, reduce the envelope of the, uh, originally approved house. The proposed project qualifies as an administrative decision, but the applicant agreed to defer the project, uh, decision to the Planning Commission in order to minimize, uh, any further delays since the applicant is, uh, very close to, um, being ready for, uh, pulling the building permits and, uh, which I think they would probably do immediately after the local appeal period would, um, expired on, uh, on approval of a project. The property is located in the Ramirez Canyon Residential Neighborhood and takes access from Zumeris Drive via a driveway easement, shared with a neighboring lot, uh, to the northeast. Uh, the existing driveway complies with the fire department requirements for emergency access, and no driveway improvements outside of the subject parcel are proposed. Uh, a nearby residence table was included as an attachment to the agenda report, and the table shows that the habitable square footages for surrounding properties within five hundred feet, um, based on the tax assessment are similar to those proposed for the proposed project. The project includes a single-family residence and, uh, which includes two, uh, four hundred square foot attached garages, uh, it also includes a detached second unit with a, uh, carport, a detached, um, six, sixty square foot pool bath, uh, with a attached viewing deck and a trellis, and a seven hundred and fifty square foot, uh, trellised, uh, portico chair, uh, and other, uh, associated development. The proposed residence is visible from Pacific Coast Highway, however, as shown in the bottom right-hand, uh, photograph in this slide, the landscaping along the northern side of Pacific Coast Highway, um, help visually, uh, screen the residence. Also, the proposed residence will not project above the existing residence in the higher background as viewed from Pacific Coast Highway, and the portion over eighteen feet, uh, will not obstruct primary views of adjacent properties. Therefore, the proposed residence is not expected to have, uh, significant visual impacts on scenic areas, uh, does not obstruct primary views of surrounding residents, and is not expected to adversely affect neighborhood character. Just prior to this meeting, um, we were reviewing the, um, grading plans, uh, which had not been revised since the project was last approved by the Planning Commission, and realized that there is a portion of the grading that, um, spills, uh, to the property immediately to the north. Um, the applicant, um, has agreed to add a condition to the project that will require, um, the applicant to submit a separate application, um, to allow any, um, of that off-site grading, um, and, um, again, that would be done as a separate application, uh, instead of, as part of this application, because as the notice was, uh, was sent out for this project, it didn't include, uh, the description of this work, nor did it include the, um, the, uh, information on the adjacent, uh, subject, or the adjacent property. Uh, also, um, the landscaping plans and grading plans show the entry gates and a propane tank, uh, and other equipment within the cul-de-sac, um, of the, um, private driveway easement. Uh, as these improvements are not, uh, customarily improvements necessary, uh, for the enjoyment of the easement, a condition is also proposed by staff to, um, have the applicant make revisions to, uh, the project plans to relocate, uh, those improvements to outside of the road easement. In conclusion, um, if, uh, with the incorporation of these conditions of approval and those conditions already in resolution number nineteen dash fifty-eight, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, um, adopt resolution number nineteen dash fifty-eight, approving the project as revised, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, I have a question, Trevor. Trevor, we, we heard a project in Big Rock that was on the bluff, and, uh, it was sliding, so they had these fancy foundations and all this stuff, uh, maybe Craig knows what street it was on, but it was right over the highway. And it was appealed by a guy named Mr. Hack Lee to the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission determined that the city had no authority to grant any extensions past expiration, and it was not in our LCP. Uh, that was a bright line that could not be crossed, so the project was turned down by the Coastal Commission. How can we do that in this case if that's already been determined?
This is a whole new application, this is what Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Jennings was alluding to earlier, that.
This is just another confusion, right?
It's not an amendment, yeah.
Okay.
You're right, once it's expired, it can't be resuscitated.
Okay, um, now, what, why is this not covered by the hillside ordinance?
Um, so the question is, um, why doesn't the hillside ordinance apply to this project? And the answer to that is, uh, they're not proposing any work, uh, based on ten-foot contours, uh, on slopes, on slopes are steeper than thirty percent.
But it can be viewed from, uh, a named road.
Uh, it could be viewed from the main road, yes, so it.
Isn't that, isn't that a requirement, isn't that what defines what's covered by the hillside ordinance?
First, you have to be located on slopes of that degree.
Okay. Now, the, the additional grading you're adding, is it more than seventy-four cubic yards?
I'm sorry?
The additional grading you are adding, they only have seventy-four cubic yards before they reach the limit. Is that grading more than seventy-four cubic yards?
So, um, grading is calculated based on residential lot, so what we're talking about is a very small amount of grading that is spilling onto the adjacent property, um, and so that amount of non-exempt grading will be calculated for that adjacent property, however, that adjacent property, um, has been developed and it was approved under, um, it was approved under county requirements, which didn't have the requirement of the a thousand cubic yards. So they can still add, uh, the additional grading that is, that would be required for this project.
Okay, does.
So are you saying that that grading is counted in that property to the north, which has a thousand cubic yards left?
Correct.
Well, it's just, it's old, it doesn't have a thousand left, if they tore it down, it would have a thousand left. So does the, does this property owner own that property?
Uh, no, and we can talk to the applicant, but, um, they have assured us that they have, uh, agreement with that property owner to, uh, allow the grading to take place on the adjacent property.
So, do we have, uh, are we requiring, uh, an agreement in our resolution?
So what we're requiring as part of, as part of the condition, we're going to require that they process a separate application, which is going to be required to be signed by the property owner, and they have to authorize, uh, the applicant to process the application on their behalf, so they will be, um, again, authorizing the work because they're the ones that are going to be submitting the application.
So, does the, if this was granted, it wouldn't become, the permits could not be issued until that was granted? What happens if it gets turned down?
So if it gets, uh, so if the, uh, a, a neighbor does not want to proceed with, uh, that work on their property, um, the applicant will have to amend their application once again, and, uh, the retaining wall, uh, that they've designed is designed to be exactly a six feet, so if they can't do the off-site grading, that wall will increase in height, which will then require variance, so we will be back here if that's the case.
So you, you can't, they cannot commence construction until that's determined?
They can commence the construction on their property, but they're not going to be able to final their project until, uh, they are able to make that work. The, that part of the grading, uh, is critical, uh, in that they, uh, the driveway, uh, in order to meet the fire department requirements, uh, is requiring those retaining walls, so they can't increase the steepness of the driveway because that would be in conflict with the fire department, and they can't increase the height of those retaining walls because that requires a variance, so in either case, uh, we would probably be coming back here if, if, there are no other solutions.
And, uh, okay, well.
You know, I, it's just interesting, this, I, this is one of the first ones I've seen where we got all these loose ends sort of hanging around out there, right, coming, I mean, is there anything else we're missing? I mean, anytime somebody comes in at the last minute with, like, some changes, you sort of say, boy, is, is there more that I've missed?
Yes, there is, so we, we can.
It's just this.
I mean, in this particular case, this entire project has been approved previously, so this, we, we did identify this one issue to clean up as part of it, and, um, they made some design changes as well, but it's been pretty thoroughly gone over at this point.
So we spent, eh, and the applicant can attest to this, we spent an incredible amount of time, uh, combing through, um, the architectural plans to make sure that's correct. We didn't spend that time on the grading plans because the applicant was specifically asked not to touch the grading plans, since the grading plans are the exact same grading plans that were last approved by the Planning Commission. So we asked them to not do anything to the grading plans, since they were making all these other changes to the house, we focused all our attention to that. So unfortunately, we didn't realize that those plans that were last approved by the Planning Commission had some errors, uh, and it showed grading offside, and so we want to address that, but we weren't aware of those prior to today, to be honest.
Can, can I follow on that one point? Just, does that mean the, the footprint is exactly the same as it was when the original geotech review was done?
That's correct.
Okay, so that twenty-ten geotech review, in your view, doesn't need to be redone because there's nothing different geotechnically?
The house footprint is in the exact same location, um, the house footprint was just very, um, it was, uh, reduced, uh, very minimally, uh, and then some of the detached buildings were also reduced in size, but they are in the exact same location and, um, you know, nothing, nothing changed from the original project in that regard.
Yeah, on the, 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 the fire department review, you have a fire flow listed as twelve-fifty GPM, which, that would, that would, for a house this size and that location, that would have to be a, what they were looking at, thinking it was a grandfathered number, but if this is a new review, then they don't get that, their, their number's going to be whatever the fire department table is, like, we, we, the applicant, maybe we should hear from them on that?
Yeah, we should get the hearing opened.
Speaker slip.
We have a speaker slip?
The applicant is here and he can fill out a slip afterwards if needed.
You're going to go out speaker slip for the, uh, come on up now, though, no, no, come on, get up here now. Excuse me?
Do we have, do we have disclosures? Do we do disclosures?
None.
None.
I live on Zumeris, but I'm probably a mile from there.
Yeah, and I live across, uh, the canyon over in Ramirez, but, uh, far enough away and, uh, visited the site, nothing else to add.
Honorable Commissioners, my name is, for the record, Roger Coraff of Design Twenty-One, um, here to talk about this project on Zumeris, which is very interesting because it started in twenty sixteen. So prior to my client purchasing the property, um, we met with, uh, the plan checker that at that time was assigned to this particular project, and asked the plan checker, what can we do in order to take this project and adjust the architecture and the design, because it just was not working. Staircases didn't work, height didn't work, it was just a terrible design. So we were told that you can do a minor substantial. So, we were told that you can do a minor substantial conformance, but you need to stay within the footprint, you cannot change the location of the house, you cannot change the location of the driveway, you cannot change the location of the guest house, the pool house, the pool, you cannot touch the landscape, you cannot touch the retaining walls, can you do that? And I said, "Yeah, I can do that." And so, we started. We started the redesigning of the process. At that time, a client purchased the property, so he didn't buy the property before we actually had the conversation. So, we did our diligence to make sure that we can actually do what we need to do in order to fulfill the needs for my client. So, we did that. We asked for an extension at that time. We made an owner change, change of ownership, got an extension, we started the design process. As we're in the design process, it takes a long time. So, it turns out that we submit the plans, and it takes months until we get answers back, multiple emails until we get answers back. Then, March 2017 comes around, and I receive an email from the plan checker, "You are going to run out of time, so you need to call for an extension." So, that's what we do, we call for an extension. August 2017, we have a meeting, public hearing here, we get granted the extension, eighteen months. At that time, I already said to everybody, "Well, this is probably not going to be enough time because, knowing how the process works, I probably don't have enough time." At that time, they also informed me after designing a project for over a year, that, "By the way, Roger, your basement ordinance changed, and you can't do the partial basement anymore." So, I had to go ahead and redesign the entire project again. I had to make it smaller, because now I had too much square footage because of the basement. So, we did that, and it took until March the twenty-first, 2018, until we got the green stamp on the plans. So, now, we're in process of doing all the architectural, you know, detailed plans, the structure plans, the grading plans, the fire plans, all those plans. So, we got them all done, they're in process, they're at the city, they're going through the motions, we get the corrections back, we immediately do the corrections, turn them back in. So, everything goes kind of smooth until November comes around, and the Volsey fire happens, and everything stops. Nobody responds to my phone calls, I can't get anything done from the fire department, nothing happens. So, regardless, we are trying to push, and then, so now, I'll give you a little bit of head on where we are today. So, today, I have the geo report that Mr. Hill mentioned is approved, so we had to make adjustments to it, it's approved. We got the fire flow availability approved. It was an issue, because after the fire, after the fire, the Volsey fire, the fire department said, "Well, this is maybe not enough," but it turns out, they're actually in process of building a new tank. So, at the end of the day, the fire flow is okay again, so, but I have the approval for that. So, then, we got the water flow approved, we got the will serve approval approved, we got the fuel modification approved, we got the fire department vehicle access approved, we got the fire department building house for the structure approved, and we got the building department approval for the house and the structure. The grading and retaining wall is right now back at California CO check for a final approval. We got all the corrections back, we did them all, we submitted them, everything is taken care of. And then, the funny thing happens with Public Works. So, all my plans are with the city at Public Works Department, and I never hear back from them. We did three turnarounds, and they always added new comments, and I never heard back from them. So, I go there and say, "Well, where are my plans? You know, I haven't got the corrections back, is everything okay? Is everything approved?" You would never submit it. Well, that's not really true. So, I have a piece of paper that shows exactly when I submitted it. So, I go back, turns out, they lost all the documents. They lost all the plans, they lost all the, the store management plan, they lost everything. Here again, I'm going to submit everything. So, we did that, we submitted everything, and I'm just really, to be honest, very frustrated with this process since three and a half years. We started with, with this minor, with this minor substantial conformance that originally we were told it takes six months, maybe a year, it's an easy process, don't worry about it, and this is not the first project I do in Malibu, because if I would have known this, it's going to take me three and a half years to get to this point, I would have scrapped this whole project and done a new one. But I couldn't because I was told six months to a year. And we did everything that the city always asks, we made all the changes, we made the house smaller and smaller and smaller. Every time, I got corrections back from, from the planning department, it's like, "Well, this is too big, this is too big, change this, change that." We always did it, made it smaller, smaller, smaller. And the only thing I didn't touch was the retaining walls, the landscape, the driveway, all those things that they from beginning, the landscape, because they were very clear, you cannot touch those. So, as you can see, ninety percent of the things are taken care of, they're done, my client is back here, he's ready to start construction. If he would have gotten the okay two months ago, three months, four months ago, this thing would be on the construction. Unfortunately, we're not in this position. So, I'm sorry when I'm so frustrated, but it is a kind of like frustrating process. And at this point, I just kindly asked the board to review, to approve the project as it is presented, because we did so much hard work, so much money went into this project, and we're that close to just get this project off the ground. I mean, we're really like, I just have to like do a few loose ends, and it's done. So, thanks very much for your time.
And we closed the public hearing, it's a character builder, think about it that way. We closed the public hearing.
Can we finish the question I had?
Finish, go back to you, go ahead.
Yeah, about the, the fire flow.
I thought he answered that.
We, we, well, we, we have a document that says August eighth, 2019. Is that the, the fire flow document you're saying was the latest thing you got from them? Or you got something newer than that?
No, no, the fire flow got approved in February twenty...
Come on, come back up, yes.
So, go ahead.
The fire flow, I can't get a fuel modification approved, and I can't get the, the vehicle access approved, and I can't get the building approved unless that is approved. So, I got the fire flow approved in February 2019.
Okay, so the latest document we have on that is the fire department, August sixth, 2019. Fire, and so that, that sounds recent, right?
Yeah.
But that's the one that says twelve-fifty GPM?
Yeah, that's what I just said, because they're building a new tank. I cannot, I could not get to this point without having this problem resolved, because this problem was erased in December of last year. So, I go to the city, and it said, and then, and then the public works says, "Well, you know, we can't really give you the fire flow that the fire department wants."
This, there'll be a question for Adrian then. Tank or no new tank, a house that big, would the fire department ever, given the table they have for GPM per house size, could they conceivably say twelve-fifty? Wouldn't they want more like eighteen or two thousand?
It says here, here's the review where they approved it.
We can't, we can't really speak for the fire department.
I, I think that they're looking at it going, "Oh, this, this goes back to a permit from years ago when this was the standard that they got, and we're just grandfathering that standard."
You think the fire department made a mistake?
I do. I, I, that's what I'm asking, if, if they haven't...
The referral sheet includes a more, a recent date. The application for this project was submitted this year. So, the CDP application number is one is nineteen dash zero-two-nine, and the date on the actual referral sheet has the date of when the application was submitted. And also, there's a description in that, that talks about that this is a new single family residence, since that's what the Planning Commission, or excuse me, the fire department used to approve the project.
So, you, you think they're, they're treating it as a completely new house, not referring back to some prior approval years ago?
They have to, yeah. They have to consider it as a new house.
Okay, that's just really weird then.
Craig, in all my years, I've never seen the fire department, other people have grandfathered anything. Maybe they have, but I've never seen it.
Well, sometimes they say, "Yeah, we approved it, we're just re-upping it." I have seen that. Okay, anyway, then, six days after that approval, we got the, the Water Works will serve letter that said that the property makes, they checked the box, it says the property may experience low water pressure and/or shortage and high demand. Is that pro forma now for that whole area, or is that the specific to this lot and this situation? Because, and did, so did the fire department know that this property may experience low pressure?
You know, I, I don't know if that's something that the water district is checking for all projects in Malibu. I believe that they might be, but I would have to go back and, and look.
The fire department sets the fire flow requirement, and the water district says what they can provide, and so the two go hand in hand.
Water district weighed in after fire, so fire didn't know that the water pressure would be low.
Well, they're, they're saying they can, it's, it's a, it's saying they will serve the property and can serve the property, so that's, they don't issue that if, let's see, I'm just looking at it now.
Well, all I can tell you is, during the Volsey fire, every single house in West Malibu had deficient fire, water flow. So, it's universal.
Yeah, the, the fire department is saying that they will serve water to the property. If they were not able to meet the fire flow requirements, they would not have checked that box.
Okay. With, may I say, with all due respect, I have to go first to the water department to get their approval, and then with that piece of paper, I got to go back to the fire department, and then I get the approval. So, it's not vice versa. So, I have to, they give me, the fire department gives me a document that I have to bring back to the water department. The water department checks everything, makes sure everything's good, I pay my money, they sign the document, and with that document, I'm going to go back to the fire department, then, and the fire department will say, "Yes, you're good to go." You can't, you can't do it any other way.
I, I would agree, except in this case, the, you got the water, the will serve six days after the fire.
But I had a will serve letter that was old, so I had to renew it. So, they knew that this is a new project. It's not like, this, this process went on, this took me three months to take care of it, three months, just to take care of this water issue situation.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure how to integrate this, because it just doesn't make sense to me. Maybe I'll try to move on, and we'll, we'll think about it. But the landscape plan, we're talking about not changing it, it is completely illegible. How come sometimes the PDFs will scale on a computer or an iPad, whatever, you can actually read it? This one, there's, I don't know that there was any way to judge it, it's too small on the paper, it's too... So, the question is, have, have the city's standards changed any since 2010 in terms of what is allowable or not? And if they haven't changed, then we can readily take, take the word that the, the plan is fine, but if any landscape standards have changed...
I don't think there's anything that would be applicable to this brand-new project that would have changed.
They changed in 2002, not 2010.
The landscape water conservation ordinance got amended along the way, but that just lowered the threshold from five thousand square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet for any project, but this is a whole bunch more square feet than that, so it would have been in place anyway.
So, we can reliably take the 2010 approval as being still relevant?
Yes.
Okay. This is proposing two driveways with the second unit that creates two independent residences? Is that not of concern to anybody? Maybe Adrian, you could address that?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Well, they're, they're accessing the site with two driveways from each side with the two residences, so it, again, it's kind of like the question I had about the wildlife road one.
There's one main, just one main driveway with a circular driveway in the middle, is that what the question is?
The question was, I thought I saw that they were proposing an entrance down on the southwest portion of the property, is that not true?
It's just one driveway.
Then I, okay, then I must have missed to read something on that. Let's see, the, the fuel modification plan, L3, refers to a future tennis court, and I'm wondering if that might increase impermeability beyond what's permissible in a sort of piecemealing way, so...
It's not part of the scope of work, correct?
Well, it's listed on the plan.
Well, yeah, but if it's not what, what the governing document is, is the, the resolution with the project description that's in the resolution, so...
Could, could we condition any future development on assessing the grading and impermeability cumulatively, so it isn't a piecemeal situation?
It actually already has to be, so if they were to come back at some future date, we would be looking at that.
You'd say you've already reached your threshold, if they have?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And, and let me ask on that, the tennis court is considered grading, right? It's different than a pool. Impermeable and...
Yes.
Yeah. And then, one of the neighbor emails suggested that there's an area that's had a lot of severe flooding through the year. Visually, I'm thinking that's on the south side of the property? Is that the neighborhood, the neighbor to the south?
I am not aware of that, and, I mean, if anything, it must be the south lower corner where we don't do anything.
That's what, that's what I was thinking. So, my question, I guess, is, do we know what they were talking about, and is that something that's been addressed, or is that an issue at all? That's, that seemed to be their biggest concern, was the quote-unquote "severe flooding."
I mean, at the end of the day, we have to do erosion control and everything, so when the build, when the homes are built, you, most of the water will be collected. So, at the end of the day, you're not going to have that issue anymore, because we have to collect all the water from all the hard surfaces, from the roofs, from everywhere, to collect it, bring it controlled into an environment, and then it goes away. So, I mean, it shouldn't really be an issue at the end of the day. Right now, maybe it is an issue because it's undeveloped, and, you know, that, that's a problem.
Well, and I guess they're not here tonight, so they're, they're not too worked up about it. All right.
I have a very simple question. You keep talking about you made the house smaller and smaller, but it's, it's seven feet, seven square feet from its allowable maximum.
So, the problem...
So, did you start out bigger than the maximum and get smaller?
No. So, the problem is, the problem started with this basement situation, and it's kind of hard to explain, but, and unfortunately, I was told to remove those lines, but originally, in the original, in the first and second application that we did, we always included in red the outline of the old house, and it was always smaller, you know, and maybe I even have a PDF file here, I can show this. But the situation started with the fact that I couldn't use some of the square footage from the basement. So, even though my house is smaller, my square footage, the livable square footage gets a little bit bigger because of that problem.
The fifty percent.
Because of the fifty percent. And that was really, really difficult to accomplish it, because I couldn't change the shape of the building. And as you can see, the shape with this, that's the shape that the original house was, and I kind of had to, you know, make it work with the square footage. So, yes, you're right, it's pretty high up there, but it's because, it's a result because of the fact that my basement is gone. I don't have that, you know, fifty percent anymore.
Well, and, and did you also, because, and that caught me as well, just that, that you were almost at the max, but it got smaller. Is it all, did you, like, the second floor and, and some of your plans, it looked like you kind of made a more open space? Was that how you also accommodated?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, you kind of shrank the...
I shrunk the building, and then in the centerpiece, I had to open it up, you know, to kind of use the square footage.
To have lowers TDSF on the upper floors?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Can I clarify the issue I had before, and this is now why I'm concerned about the fire flow? The project description from the fire department's stand, standpoint, the review sheet, project description, quote, "CDP carryover from expired CDP ten oh nineteen." So, that suggests to me that, that when they put in the twelve-fifty flow, they were thinking, "We're applying the standard that existed when they..."
What are you reading from?
From the fire department review sheet, referral sheet. Because I, I just don't see how they would have allowed the twelve-fifty, given that table they have that says, you know, twelve-fifty is the minimum, and then as the houses get bigger, they require substantially more. This is the, one of the biggest houses you could have. So, they're saying, right on here, it says, "Project description, CDP carryover."
Yeah, I, I think what you should consider is, the fire department and the water company are the only two people that the city can't change, or the only two people that are independent approvers. We don't, we can't say...
On its face, it does look like they made a mistake.
Well, let's, let's take it a little further. Let's say you take a miss, they made a mistake, and now we deny this project because we think that the fire department made a mistake, and so that, how in the world could the applicant ever correct that situation? They have to get the fire department to come in here and say, "No, by God, that's what we meant, we signed off on that, so that's what we meant."
Or, or we ask for a continuance and get it settled?
The applicant may think it's settled already.
We can add a condition to confirm with the, reconfirm with the fire department what...
That would be great.
That's what I think. We don't want to stop this thing. Staff, not us.
Yes, that's fine.
That's fine. Okay. I just, you know, it just seems like a, a little loose thread hanging there.
Anything else, guys? Well, I'm just wondering if anybody's concerned about the size. Now, that's a more recent issue than when he started his journey, but...
And it's been a long one, as he said.
Yeah.
There are some big houses up there, but not this big.
No, well, there's some this big.
It's close to that.
Yeah, and I mean, that, that area's got, you know, this isn't, doesn't seem like it jumps out as, as, you know, it kind of fits the character. I mean, it's up to three times the size of some of its nearest, but there are some that are right about its size, so...
I did have a question, is there a standard condition here for the repairing the road, any damage to the road? Which, which one is that? Because there was, one of the public comments was about that. Yeah, do we have that in?
Let me look, is there, are there any other things you want to...
Construction management plan, isn't it?
Trying to find it.
While you guys are looking at that, let me ask a couple of questions, because I was a little confused about the way the easement lines up, and particularly with regard to the letters from... the letters from Donna and Jay Ford. Do you, does the applicant share a driveway with Donna and Jay Ford?
It's a private road that comes down, and the neighbor's house enters a little bit before we actually go into our property. So they share the driveway as you come down, but then at one point, it stops, and then my client's property starts.
Okay, so it, it crosses their property in order to reach your property, is that correct?
It doesn't cross their property. The property goes right to the street. So you have, you have the private road that comes down.
Okay. My, my, my first question is, who, who owns the fee that the road runs along? Is it the, the Fords, or is it your applicant that, that owns the land that is subject to this easement?
Maybe you would answer that question. There's actually two separate property owners. Each of them own 20 feet of the driveway.
Ah, okay, so it's a shared...
So it's a shared driveway.
Cross easements.
But the, this property does not own the road easement, except for the very end of it, which includes the, the end of the cul-de-sac.
All right, all right. Well, that's, that's clear enough for me, I think. But the one thing I wanted to ask about was the, the letters from, the emails from the Fords, which talked about the resurfacing of the driveway and the insurance that there would be, we would like to ensure that, that the Stuhar property is responsible to install drainage, and to resurface all blacktop areas of the road with a curb, which will help with the water issue. And then when I go back and I look at the Public Works review sheet, it says that it's to be developed flush with no curb. And have you worked that out with a neighbor?
It's the first time I'm hearing that, so if that's a concern, then we will talk to him about it. But, I mean, we, like I said, it's the first time I heard about it. I'm going according to what I get from Public Works Department, what our grading plan shows, and if that is of concern, then, yeah, sure, we're gonna talk about it.
Let me see if I can find the exact reference here.
Well, while you're looking, Jeff.
Yeah.
Zumares from Canaan Down is a funky road.
Yeah.
And I used to live on it.
I don't think there's a curb on it. Mikey, Mikey used to live there.
I think he still does, yeah.
Okay, so, so where are we with this, guys?
I, in response to the question earlier about repair of the paving, there is a condition included in the resolution number 26 that talks about assessing the condition in advance of construction, and then again afterwards in repair of damage.
Thank you.
Okay, yep.
So between PCH and the subject, so you'd be, as you know, you have to repair the road once the work is done, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and Jeff, are you?
I just found, it's on the proposed conditions for approval from the Public Works Department. It's on, I don't know what page it is, there's no cross-reference, but basically, it's dated July 3, 2019, and it says that the driveway shall be constructed of either six inches of concrete over four inches of aggregate base, or four inches of asphalt concrete over six inches of aggregate base. The driveway shall be flush with the existing grades with no curbs. So something for you to work out with.
Okay.
The, the neighbor.
Okay. We, we done?
Yep, I, I moved the...
Okay, let's, let's, the additional resolutions, we, I just want to make sure we understand what they are, because you were adding stuff that wasn't in, just want to make sure we got them all.
Well, you think so.
Right?
I think the condition we were considering about the driveway is there.
Right, but he had conditions regarding grading, the, the property next door. He had another, there were two of them you had, I think, Adrian, is that correct?
Yeah, there are two additional conditions that we would like to add to the resolution, and I can, I can read them to the record?
Yes, please.
So we would add, condition 29, project plans must be revised to show the entry gate, propane tank, and any other equipment outside the driveway easement.
And that's to add condition 29 and move the rest of them down one?
Correct.
Not to replace 29, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Condition 30 is prior to the issuance of a grading permit for the off-site grading, the property owner slash applicant must process a separate planning application and must obtain plan approval for the off-site grading.
And to, from again, so you're adding conditions 29 and 30, not removing any, and moving the rest of the conditions to renumber after, starting with 31?
Correct.
Adrian, that's something we don't have to do, right?
Correct.
Okay, the other item was the checking with the fire department regarding, how do we do that? Is that, we put that in the resolution, is that, how do you guys want to handle that?
You can request that staff do that, or if you want to add a...
You can request staff to confirm it, because if it's...
If we do...
The carryover status.
If we do, if staff, if we request they do it, you satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go with that. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
We get a motion?
I move all that, plus what's in the staff report resolution.
Okay. See you in a second.
To confirm that would be, you're moving staff's recommendation, including the two additional conditions, read into the record by Adrian. And also to direct staff to confirm there was not a mistake made about the fire approval.
That's correct.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time, and sorry for being a little emotional, but it's a long process.
You'll be stronger when this is over.
Thank you.
All right, last one, guys. We are down to item 5D. Close to development permit number 18014, site plan review number 19079, application for new single-family residence including a second unit associated development on Seastar Drive. Justine, you're on.
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the Planning Commission. The project before you this evening is CDP number 18014 for a new single-family home and associated development on a vacant lot at 6282 Seastar Drive. The subject parcel is characterized by a gently sloping topography that ascends to the northeast with a steeper slope at the northernmost corner and a man-made drainage course, as well as a 20-foot-wide hiking and equestrian trail easement running parallel to the southeastern property line. I'll talk more about that in a minute. In addition, an open space easement is recorded on the northern third of the lot and along most of the southeastern property line as well. No development is proposed within any of those recorded easements. The project proposes, as I said, a new single-family home, approximately 8,350 square feet of total development square footage, a maximum of 18 feet tall. That's, TDSF does include a 3,808-square-foot basement, as well as a 782-square-foot second unit, swimming pool, concrete pool deck and patios, driveway decking, retaining walls along the driveway, 651 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, septic system and landscaping, as well as a discretionary request for 2,842 cubic yards of remedial grading, which I'll discuss in more detail. As you can see from this site plan, I've roughly sketched out the open space restricted area easement on that northern third of the property that I was talking about. And the hiking and trail easement runs all the way down that southeastern side of the property. The full second unit is located on the northern side of the residence, above the garage. And as I said, the retaining walls up to six feet in height will be located along the northwestern property boundary and around the motor court. The proposed basement is located entirely below the first floor living area, and the vertical distance between the finished grade adjacent to the exterior of the basement wall to the bottom of the finished floor above the basement will not exceed three feet according to code. As you can see in these renderings, starting at the top from the driveway and going north around to the garage, you can see that the residence does not exceed 18 feet. And moving around to the east and, and then around to the south, which would be the side facing the closest neighbor, you can also see that the residence is designed as a multi-level structure that steps down the gradual slope in order to follow the natural contours of the lot. These are pictures taken of the story pole, and you can see in the distance, sorry poles, in the distance, I took a picture from across the cul-de-sac, and you can see the property all the way across the, the vacant area to, on the left side of the image is actually 6270 Seastar, so I don't want to, it could be a little bit confusing from this image. You could think that it was the entire property, but kind of the left half is, is actually a different property. And then the image on the right is taken from that southern neighbor's property line looking north. And these two images are taken from the rear of the proposed residence, looking towards the Pacific Ocean, kind of, I was standing kind of right along the edge of that open space restricted area easement. The site plan review for remedial grading is for this landslide area that occurs, occurred in 2006, 2007 due to storm erosion in the northern part of the property. It's, it's north and upslope of the proposed residence, of the proposed residence, but the residence, and no development takes place on the area of remedial grading. Per the project geologist, due to the relatively small amount and the shallow depth of the grading, a retaining wall was not considered an appropriate alternative. The remedial grading does not really result in any substantial landform alteration, as the grading will consist entirely of removal and recompaction to return the slope to its previous condition. No, as I said, no part of the proposed development will be located on the area of remedial grading or anywhere in that restricted area. There is a very small sliver at the very top of this landslide area that is, that occurs off the property, and that will not be touched as part of this project. You may also see that there is an existing concrete V-drain within that landslide area, which was damaged in 2006, 2007, when the landslide occurred. That is proposed to be removed and replaced as part of this project. In conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of resolution 1957, which approves CDP 18014, including the site plan review number 19079. I am available for questions, as well as the owner and the applicant.
Thank you, Justine.
A quick question, Justine?
Excuse me?
On the, the area of the R and R remedial, yeah, that word there.
Really?
Oh, sorry.
We've had a request for a short break. If we could do that first, and then come back and ask questions, so we've got some continuity, is that okay?
You want to disclose?
I have got a lot of kindling there.
All right, so we've, it's nine o'clock.
And please, I don't contact the commissioner since we've opened this item.
I was thinking the same, I thought we'd make it.
Yeah, well, Jeff.
All right, Jack, come on, we're ready to go.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Let's do disclosures first before we, and we'll turn it back over to Mr. Commissioner Marks.
I visited the site with Commissioner Marks and I don't know if we can have anything new to report, but got to lay the land.
None.
Visited with Mr. Hill, nothing more than's in the report.
Yeah, drove by, didn't learn anything that isn't already available. So Commissioner Marks, you were about to ask some questions.
Yeah, just with the recompaction, when I looked at that, was that technically ESHA up there? Or is it just kind of native habitat? Like what's going to be the plan on the re, you know, vegetation returning to its natural state? Or what's the plan?
Bioassessment was completed and it was determined that there was no ESHA on the property. So no, that is not ESHA. I'd have to take a quick look at the bio referral to see what was required in terms of landscaping or revegetation. And I can do that while other discussions go on.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Bring the applicant up? Want to hear the applicant first? I don't have any speaker slips, so. We need a speaker slip.
Thank you, thank you Doug. Did we have a presentation available? There it is. All right, we can start. Just stating for the applicant, I'm Doug Burge, the architect for the project. We started this project a couple of years ago. And the owner is here also in the room to answer any questions. Addressing just one of the first questions before I start by Mr. Marks is that geologist was land phases with Jake Holt and they had identified that area and they felt, and they have a letter here that they had wrote, how, saying how the landslide was obviously something pre-existing, it was done before. They all know the option, the standard grading was to stabilize the area construction of several unsightly walls, proposed grading repair without the least amount of site impact if it was proven. It's really an area that we weren't planning on developing, but it's an area that just has to be kind of taken care of because it was a previous condition. So it's really something that's going to better the property and the overall. The other thing that we had to work with here was that there was a bunch of easements and open space easements and side easements, view easements. So we felt placing this house was right in the middle of the property. We, it's one of the last, there's only a few undeveloped properties in Seastar. So we felt, we did meet with some of the Seastar neighbors to the south and to the west. And one of the applicants, not applicants, but the neighbor just below here, we had met with and he was just, you know, wanted to make sure that we're up on the hill, which we were. There was an old earthquake fault that was running through here that was established. And it was then established by the geologist that it really wasn't there. So that was proven back as somebody had found some old report that was referencing something that's a possibility. And then that was taken as a, something that was proven to be incorrect, free of hazard from any situation on that area. So geologically, everything is super stable, never has been any development on the site. So we were the first ones to develop it. We were very careful in creating this house. And although it is to a maximum TDSF, which is something that's conflicting on issues concerning the sizes, I was really careful to make sure that the house itself, even though it's listed as 8,000 feet, it's actually 6,000 feet as a footprint. So if you look at it from a neighbor's point of view, it's not a large house, it's a medium house. And if you look at Seastar as a neighborhood, there's very large homes within that neighborhood. And that's why we have close to 4,000 feet, about 3,800 feet down in the basement level. And so when we set the house, we just wanted to make sure that above the ground, I wanted to have a house that looked compatible and it wasn't oversized for the neighborhood. If you look at the actual location of the house, which we just talked about, we wanted to have, to make sure we have the fire department walk around, which is required. The other thing, let's see, I was clicking. The other thing that we wanted to do, this is the approach on the house. And it's again, one story in nature. This is the driveway coming from the cul-de-sac, so we wanted to come up, park in the back. And so when you're in the house, you're looking straight at the ocean. So we would be the ocean on the opposite direction. So you're seeing the pool at this point. The other thing was, is you start walking around the house. We have a small section of the house, 892 square feet above the garage. And that is the side stair going up to this unit and that is 18 feet in height. And that is the only section that's actually a two-story. Everything else is all under 18 feet. In fact, the entire house is under 18 feet. The average house size everywhere else is about 14 or 15 feet. The other thing that was potentially a question, which we dealt with pretty strongly, was, let's see where this is clicking to, was where the basement was daylighting. And we have a three-foot rule, so the three-foot rule says you can't be measured from the underfloor of the floor above, three feet daylight, and that's where all the grading can come to. And that is where we have this three-foot glass along this, I guess it's east facing location. So it's in that particular height of the building, again, is through a section is the three-foot window. And then you have that 18-foot max line. So technically it's reading at an angle because that's the existing slope that it shows. So we went to great lengths to try to get this house so it was not something that was large as far as, as far as the location goes. And we wanted to keep the massing down. On that end, let me just go back to that last slide. So on the left there, that's really just the pool, the structure itself is kind of set back in there, knowing that there's a bunch of PVDs, private view determinations behind us, which is non and Seastar. But if you operate on these other hill areas, we knew that that was going to be something we wanted to keep 18 feet. We are here to answer any other questions and I would look forward to your comments. Thank you very much.
I just have.
Oh, sorry. Close to public comment, back to the commissioners.
One question, staff. The Plan AO1 shows the fencing and it indicates wire fencing. And I assume this is under that Section 3, whatever it is, that requires split rail over a certain size. So that would determine the fencing, correct? And the second part of that question is, none of the easements are fenced. The equestrian easements.
Where are you seeing the fencing on sheet?
On AO1, where the right-hand corner is, right about, almost exactly the middle of the page, it says wire fencing. It's tiny, I mean, I had to get Craig to read it.
Can you repeat your question about the fencing?
I assume that they would not follow the plan, they would use the required, over a half an acre, you have to have split rail.
Yeah, that's a requirement per the biology referral.
And I don't know exactly where the easement is, but I assume that the fence line is on the inside of the equestrian easement instead of the property line? Maybe I should ask Doug that. How do you handle?
All these, I mean, there's trails.
You mean the trail easement?
Trail easement.
The MRCA trail easement?
They should all be. That was the question I had, I mean, is there any?
Never seen a horse on that part of the property.
I know that we've had, had three or four houses.
Yeah, down below.
In Seastar that have this.
Same thing.
Yeah. Well, whatever we need to do to condition that, it's not something that's, it's obviously on the property. So if it's standard rules that need to apply to this, then we can make that happen.
You could add a condition to have them submit a fence plan that clearly illustrates.
Leads those things open, yeah, as we try to make sure.
Sure.
That does not obstruct any easements.
Yeah, no problem.
I believe that's actually an existing wire fence on the, that might be part of the other property. Sorry, it took me a while to figure out where we were. I believe that's an existing wire fence, is that correct?
I mean, that may not be legal, but that's compliance.
Yeah, it may just be part of the, under the original survey that picks up existing conditions. But for example, let's see, condition number 18 in the resolution says that the applicant shall include an elevation of the proposed electronic driveway gates. On the architectural plans, maybe we just broaden that condition to indicate that they provide a detailed fence plan that indicates all.
It complies with three-point, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's in there already.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for approval that includes that as the additional condition.
Go to your, let's go to the questions first.
Yeah, okay. Justine, Plan AO2 says pool per separate permit, what is that about?
Plans, that, that used to confuse me a lot as well, great question. That just means that the pool will be under a separate building permit.
And is that?
So they pull the building permit for the house, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong. And then the pool will be pulled, just like a grading permit is often pulled separately as well.
So that doesn't suggest that it's not being counted now for issues like grading or impermeability or whatever? I guess a pool isn't impermeable, but yeah, okay.
Correct, the pool is proposed and included in the resolution.
Okay. I, I need some help understanding some language in the original coastal CDP for the tract, where they require that, quote, "Grading for the development of the single-family residence shall be limited to the minimum amount necessary for driveway access." This to me looks like if you had decided, let's make a really long driveway, as long as we can practically make it, let's do that. This doesn't look like the minimum amount for driveway access. How do, how do you rationalize, I mean, obviously somebody's read this before, but this doesn't seem like the minimum amount of grading for a driveway. You could put the driveway where, somewhere near where the pool is or in the sort of dead space under the deck and expand that out and move the pool over 15 feet or whatever. I mean.
I think I can defer to the architect on this, but part of the purpose of the driveway is to also provide the fire department turnaround and make sure there's enough hose lay distance all the way around the structure. And if you, did you guys look at alternate layouts for the driveway?
Could that be done with just a five-foot access around the back of the property?
We have to be able to park the truck and then drag the hose around.
But, I mean, theoretically, you could do all that, moving everything that's here much closer to the street. I'm not suggesting that's the ideal thing necessarily, but I mean, you do have, your, your required front setback on this parcel is 65 feet and the proposed is 175. So theoretically, everything could be 110 feet closer to the road. So just going back to what the language is in the CDP, what does that mean when they say, "Grading shall be limited to the minimum amount necessary for driveway access"?
Well, I don't think it, it doesn't say houses shall be closest to the road.
But it does say it shall be the limited amount, the minimum amount necessary for access.
I think part of that language too is referring to the original grading plan for the subdivision, which included, I believe, some of the driveway and the garage pad. The language is a little bit confusing in this CDP because it gets, conflicts itself sometimes in the staff report. But in looking at other permits that the Coastal Commission approved, the driveway in this case, I'd have to compare to the other previous approvals, but the amount of non-exempt grading is similar to things that have been approved previously.
I don't know, I don't know that I see that. It seems like other houses in the neighborhood have much shorter driveways.
That's what I mean. I'd have to compare driveways, but in terms of non-exempt grading, which is sometimes what they mean when they say grading, because that's the only number that they normally list.
Can I help answer that question, Craig?
Please, please.
Again, there's a lot of these lots, these, there's about three lots in the subdivision that are actually the behind lots. So you, ocean's facing this way, hill is back there. A lot of the other lots, you would actually just drive right on and you could just enter the house at the side position, other position, because of where these upslope lots, it was actually 10 and 11. It's just that to be able to get up onto the driveway, and we still wanted to maintain our grading variance numbers and not ask for a variance and still design a house that fits in so the land form alteration is minimal. Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could just drive a driveway up and push the house down, but would that house be worth as much or be the best house for that location? So in this particular instance, we think it was feasible and it's warranted in this design. There are other lots in Seastar that we've done houses in, that you could have a shorter driveway because of where they're located. And that particular topography on an upslope lot, you would actually look at that. But as the architect for this project, trying to maximize something for our owners', you know, use of this property, we felt this was very feasible in this location, it doesn't have any impact. And we don't need two sets of six-foot walls to make that wall work, that driveway work. Like there are other instances in Malibu that that has happened, where you'd have to stack the retaining walls. It's anywhere from a two to a, to a four-foot wall that's in here to actually create that. So, and the homeowners association also has to approve all these projects. So they've actually looked at this also and they've had no issues. So that's my answer to that question.
You said the home, is it the homeowners association, the architectural?
It's a HOA and they don't really have like a, they don't meet and discuss projects, need to get a letter from them.
But I've got a letter, there's a letter from the Seastar Architectural Committee.
Okay, well that's, they don't, they don't meet, but they are, they might be called that.
Who are they? I mean, how many, do you know who they are? I mean, is there one, two, five?
I think it's. Okay, but it sounds like they meet regularly, it's a group.
I didn't hear what he's.
They don't meet regularly, they don't like meet once a month or anything. So apparently it's four or five people, homeowners, and then they send the plans off to somebody else.
Yeah, to an outside architect.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, how much grading goes on under that pool? I recognize it's above ground, above grade mainly, but.
I think it's about half and half, just the way it's.
About half and half?
Yeah.
Okay. The, back to the coastal CDP again, stipulates, staff report said, "No grading for tennis courts or other ancillary uses which require level pads." The CDP actually says, and I'm surprised this was omitted, but it says, "No grading, no grading for tennis courts, pools, or other ancillary uses which require level pads, no, shall be permitted, none shall be permitted." So.
How would you have a grading for a pool if you gotta dig a pool in the ground? I don't understand that comment, it's weird.
Well, they're saying they don't want you doing any grading for a pool, which suggests that they don't want pools.
Then our pool is better than most because we're grading less, because they're not digging as much into the ground.
Yeah, but can anybody explain what this condition in the original CDP is talking about?
What's the date of it?
Whenever this was coastal promulgated this, probably in 1990-ish? Early 90s?
Earlier than that, I think. I think you'll find in a lot of the old coastal CDPs, it made no sense at all.
What page are you looking at?
This is on page, PDF page 140. It's, I think it may be the last page of the exhibit, the coastal CDP.
Top paragraph, last sentence of the top paragraph.
Section nine, future grading for single-family development. So no grading for tennis courts, pools. I don't, what are they saying there?
Because there are tennis courts up in that development, so I have no idea.
Are we saying, so nobody's read the coastal CDP till now? I mean, what?
Well, the original development had clubhouse and tennis courts.
My thought was, and I had to confirm this, that, oh, this is because they designed it so they have that sort of communal place down at the bottom with the tennis court. And I'm thinking in my head, oh, and they've got a pool there too, and that would be why. But they don't have a pool there. So I don't know, maybe that was the original. 90, yeah. So I don't know how we're supposed to, are we just supposed? So I don't know how we're supposed, are we just supposed to ignore that, or is there an interpretation of it that's felicitous for you here?
There's a question for whoever.
If you look at the Seastar Estates, you'll see the number of the homes have pools.
I saw one.
Yeah.
I've got three right here.
You have three?
Most.
Has this been amended?
What I believe it's getting at is pools are considered excavation. Grading is landform alteration, where you take a slope and you change it. You flatten it out, you create lawns. My understanding of when they created Seastar because of the development, because of, excuse me, how they want you to face driveways and follow topography, it's a visual characteristic. So they don't want you creating flat pads or changing the hillside to have pool decks and creating this flat area around the pool, or creating a flat area to stick a pool. But if you dig a hole, that's different because that's excavation. You're not altering the topography.
I'm altering something.
No, I understand how it seems kind of like a different, excavation and grading almost seem like the same thing, but there, there's a definition in the local coastal program where grading is specifically called out as pulling dirt out and putting dirt back in and changing topography. And excavation is just simply removing that dirt and placing the foundation or whatever it is here in that area.
It's in the LCP?
That definition's in the LCP.
So is that the case in this case? Was there a flat pad?
No, it's all excavation, understructure excavation.
So they didn't make a flat pad for the pool?
No, they put a deck above grade and only do a portion under grade. So just reading the language...
So by that rationale, it's more of a visual thing because it's sticking up above grade.
But they aren't doing grading to get it there.
Yeah.
They do the excavation to accommodate the water, but they don't change the landscape to make the deck nice. They put it above it, and so they aren't grading to make a deck.
Yeah, we don't have a big flat yard pad that has, that we graded to make a pool deck. We did not do that.
So, I mean, according to this, you could just put everything on stilts, and you'd be fine. And dig some holes to make it fit.
I don't know, I just, I want to hear an interpretation, just saying there are three pools there already, how that fits with no grading for pools, the language in the CDP.
Well, they dug a hole.
So it's in, okay, so you're saying excavation is different from grading.
Yeah, that's the staff's interpretation. If you have a different interpretation, you know, you can disallow the pool if you think that it's prohibited by this CDP. But also if...
Some are looking up, can someone just look up the LCP measure? That definition is what we think it is.
And in the meantime, a sort of related question. If you hypothetically, Doug, if you had to put the house further closer to the street, would you still have to do the grading for the remedial stuff upslope? Or if you were closer to the street, would that...
The remedial work has to take place no matter what, because it's up way past on those other slopes. It's nothing to do with the house placement.
So what is it remediating, then, if it were, if you were far, if like, if you were just, say, pushed up against your front 65-foot setback to the street, and we're not even close to that, what would it be remediating?
Well, it was a condition that wasn't taken care of before in our census on the property. The geologists felt that it needed to be taken care of. It has nothing to do with the house placement.
It has nothing to do with the house, okay. Because I'm just wondering if we run into trouble with resolution finding B1, that remedial grading is not allowed when it could be avoided by changing the location of the development. You're telling us that it's unavoidable.
Well, or to put it another way, I mean, just, because I'm recognizing kind of where Craig's concerned, is that to get that wide driveway cut up to about the highest point in the property, you take a lot of hillside out. If it's needed for fire, that would be different. But if you can accommodate the parking at a lower part of the property and still have basically, you know, the same location, et cetera, it just seems like you minimize grading. I mean, is that kind of what you're getting to?
Yeah, and I'm just trying to rationalize what looks like a pretty project with what the words on the paper that we call laws say about how we're supposed to handle it.
Well, you've got to remember remedial grading, as I remember, the definition is you don't change the contour.
This isn't the remedial part.
This is, this is the driveway part, remedial.
Oh, he's talking about remedial for the landslide.
He was asking about remedial.
With respect to the site planner review for remedial grading, in this case, this is, you have to look at the other alternatives to make sure that you're, that this is the one that makes sense. In this case, this is not significant landform alteration, because basically, they're pulling out the unstable soils and then recompacting it in the same configuration. So there's no significant landform alteration there. It didn't make sense to, for the nature of this issue, to use retaining walls or piles or things like that, when you can pull it out, put it back, and it won't look any different.
Do we have any further clarity on the previous question about the, somebody was looking up something?
Yeah, about the vegetation, was that what it was?
No, whether, they're between excavation and, so why is, I got one, while he's doing that, I got one more, just like your opinion. The city passed a ordinance or whatever it was for, last meeting or the meeting before that, dealing with climate change, climate and environmental emergency in the city, right?
Okay.
And when you read the stuff that they put together, it says, you know, it sort of falls upon everybody's, everybody's house to start dealing with that stuff. Do you think large houses impact that in any way?
Large houses impact...
Large houses have any impact?
Well, if you look at lead restrictions, they'd love to have houses of 1,000 square feet, so...
Excuse me?
Lead regulations, which is one of the leadership of energy, you know, development, they'd love to have every house that's 1,000 square feet. So when you say on a larger house...
I'm just wondering, do you think we should start thinking about that as we look at these sizes of these houses coming in front of us in relationship to what the city council passed?
I guess it's something that you could consider, but there's also, if somebody wants to do other matters and take things, you know, as far as energy savings and other parts of the project that could maybe counteract maybe certain house size, that's another discussion that could come up.
Are you doing any of that in this house?
We're going to be doing it for sure when we submit for working drawings. That's why it came up, actually, this case where even the solar, as you know, solar's a requirement 2020 for all buildings now. And so we've had a discussion with the planning department as far as most panels go on a roof. Earlier tonight, we passed ground-mounted solar, which is going to be a discussion that comes up. So that alone with photovoltaic, they actually can lie flat on a rooftop, so it doesn't need to be over the height limit. In the old days, you know, the solar panels were hydraulic, they have to be tilted to get the maximum abilities, but your other ones. So adding, that's a requirement that has to be done for all houses when they get a building permit.
Right.
So any of these projects in the state of California has already enacted that. So it's something that we, even as an architect, just because even, including even all the fire-resistant materials, that's a new discussion, it's not required yet, but we're still telling our clients to do, and try to do other things that are not even in the code. So we are trying to do it, yes.
Okay, so in this house, the basic item we're looking at is the solar-powered cells. That's...
Well, yeah, you're trying to, whether you're becoming more off the grid, whether you're preparing more efficiency for water, we don't have big lawns, we don't have any lawns, in fact, on this whole project, so you're trying to reduce your impact of the water bills, because it's definitely, you know, droughts are going to be coming back. Just because we had one year of good doesn't mean we're going to have 10 years of bad. So we have to be consider that in any kind of design.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think, you know, when I read what the city council passed, it just said it's something we should start thinking about up here as we look at these larger houses. I mean, because there's a couple of things. There's the lead thing, it says, oh, I want smaller houses. And as you look at these larger houses, I mean, I'm sure this house got air conditioning?
Right, but the other thing you have to consider, because when you have the larger basements, you don't have to have as larger roof area, so the impact, and then trying to keep the footprints smaller helps that impact also. That's why even, even our current code is actually very strong in trying to minimize spread on a property and keeping things compact. But, I mean, to your point, any of these things are going to be huge issues that need to be addressed.
Something we should start thinking about, I mean, again, the city council passed a resolution, so it's something we should at least put in our...
You're right.
Hat as we look forward.
You're correct. It needs to be considered.
Absolutely. And we're looking, still an answer for Richard. Anything down there?
I'm still going through our municipal code, but in the city, or excuse me, the LCP, in the city's municipal codes, it specifically calls out excavation for foundations and understructure, which the pool is understructure grading, or understructure excavation, is excluded from grading. And also...
That's in the municipal code.
That's in the municipal, I'm looking through for it in the LCP.
It's in the LCP also.
Isn't it great?
8.3I.
Isn't it grading, but it's excluded from the count, but they still call it, it's exempt grading?
We look at it as, yes, excavation. And also, I should point out, too, I wish we had a way to get up an aerial photo. What you can see in this development is that there's actually more than three pools, found a couple more. The pools are associated, like was proposed here by Burgess Plans, they're associated with the building pad. And they're not actually creating a pad for the pool. This would be something similar to the Malibu Country Estates, which has the same restriction, which says no grading for the purposes of pools. You're limited to the pad that you have. So that's why there are homes in the country estates that have pools like these homes, where they're right next to the house.
Okay, you're sort of taking me on a random walk through the universe there. I appreciate it, but I'm just trying to get an idea if, did you get your answer to your question?
It's, I feel like, I want to say, I'd like to say yes for the project, but I feel like I'm violating the law to say that, because I haven't gotten a clear answer.
I think if I could clear that up, Richard?
I'd be happy to say yes, and then somebody who wants to appeal you will take my words and run with it, but...
I understand it, but he brings up a very good point. If you wanted to have a house pad, you build a house, but if you want to build a pad for grading, to build just a pool on that pad, or build a pad just for a tennis court, I would imagine that's what the implication of what that we were talking about, because otherwise, it's not so much, and obviously, you have to grade to build a pool, right, Craig? So I'm just saying that that has to make sense, because in that neighborhood, they're big lots.
All right, leave it up.
So, I mean, we're all, we're all just speculating, so...
So let's go, okay, so let's assume that we're going to go with Richard's random walk, but take me, what were the, there were some other things we talked about, the fence, we wanted to put something in, right?
Yeah, I have a proposed condition.
Give me the other conditions, and we'll vote on the resolution. What were the additional conditions?
What I have here would be to change number 18 to read this way, would be the applicant shall include, one, a detailed fence plan that illustrates all proposed fencing, complies with LIP 3.3, and does not obstruct any easement, 3.53, 3.5.3, and does not obstruct any easements, and, two, an elevation of the proposed electronic driveway gates on the architectural plans that are submitted for building plan check, and continues.
I would, I would use the word access easements, or, because you could have a utility easement, you certainly wouldn't want to run the fence around that.
Any, any access or trail easements that...
Yeah.
You already have, in 16, that would...
Okay.
Deal with this, but...
Was there anything else that we came up with? Is that, don't want to shoot, I remember.
That's it, that's what my motion is.
It was it? Okay, I'll second.
So that was to approve staff's recommendation with the addition that I wrote in? Is that correct?
Yes. Got a second? Kathleen, roll call.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair hearing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.